Coming up in five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ashland Planning Board Meeting of August 11th, 2022. On our agenda this evening, we do have three public hearings. These include 225 Pond Street, that is the McDonald's Building on Pond Street, 100 Chestnut Street, and 501 Pond Street. All of these, to my knowledge, are going forward this evening with the public hearing and will be taken in that order, 225 Pond Street, 100 Chestnut Street, and then 501 Pond Street. So, um, barring any other announcements, I guess just to note that due to ongoing ongoing permission by the state, the meeting is being held remotely, obviously, and it is being recorded for our audience. First, on the agenda then, to get right into things, first of all, I'll call the meeting officially to order at 7:18. And first public hearing we have this evening is 225 Pond Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review. Peter, can you just give us a brief introduction about where we are with this?
Sure. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
So 225 Pond Street is the McDonald's. We haven't heard this case, you know, it's continued from the last meeting. I think back in July, I guess in July, early July, maybe late June. But here tonight, Eric is here from Boulder Engineering, and they've updated their site plan. I know there's a lot of comments from the planning board that we didn't make at our last meeting concerning concerning the double drive-through. The queue, the landscaping, the buffering next to the abutting residential property. And there was also some questions about the trash enclosure. In, excuse me, ingress and egress to the site was always was also taken into question, especially the, I believe, is the north and or the right turn only exiting from the front into the building. Obviously, right now, there's McDonald's people kind of exit out onto Nickerson and or and then to take that left up at the right in order to use that full intersection. So that was this quick summary of what we talked about in the last meeting. However, Boulder Engineering has submitted updated plans that were submitted out, excuse me, sent out to. And I am going to hand it over to Eric and so he can run through all the updates that were made. And then we kind of go from there.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Again, for the record, Eric DeBrul with Boulder Engineering. As Peter had mentioned, it's been a while since we've been before the board. I think since that time, we met with the Conservation Commission as well, saw some updates there. I know it's been a while, so just again, give the intent of what McDonald's is doing, just remind everybody. And if I can, I'll share my screen while I'm explaining. It's disabled.
I'm not thinking of a minute.
Okay, so the intent, again, McDonald's is trying to make an improvement to their existing drive-through operations. There's a single order point today. We're adding a second order point. And again, the sole purpose is just to improve the efficiencies of their drive-through.
You can share now.
Perfect. Okay. So again, this this outside lane was added again to improve the efficiencies of the of the drive-through. The benefit of improving this drive-through is a couple-fold. By adding that outside lane, we improve the efficiency of the order-taking, removing that pinch point at the single order point. And effectively, what you see or start to see at a site like this is instead of having the stacking happening behind the order points, behind that pinch point, now start getting the stacking happening behind the order windows and the pickup windows back to those order points. We also have the benefit of adding two additional stacking space capacity to this drive-through in this configuration. So overall, between the efficiency of the order-taking, the additional stacking space and capacity, certainly a major improvement for the drive-through operation itself. Through some of the comments that we received from the planning board and staff and just some of the things that McDonald's wanted to do, obviously have this this buffer along the residential property. Previously, we did come with with the the buffer here. There was a couple of comments at the last planning board meeting about this being a little bit of a pinch point. This this access past the entrance. So we removed one of those additional parking spaces, increased the buffer, increased the plantings, and we've also added a vinyl, a white vinyl fence, six-foot white vinyl fence in that buffering. This is just generally a sight line that we're showing from this abutting property. Show, you know, where those menu boards are and where where those menu boards could reflect off of the building or just where it could be seen. And so, as you can see, it goes it goes through the buffer through the fence. So we've really put a lot of thought into making sure this property is well screened from the the drive-through. And again, under existing conditions, they've got a ton of cars stacked head in on their property. So again, I think I think that would be a major improvement to the to the butter to get this additional landscape buffering, screening, and plantings versus the cars that are there today. Some of the other comments, I'll go back to the site plan, I think. You know, this works just fine. Through the peer review comment letter that we received, there was a comment about the existing trash enclosure. I think they had built a roof on top of the enclosure. There are some questions about permits and whether it was by right or not. We're based on that, we're rebuilding a trash corral that we believe is now by right and compliant. The existing one is essentially in this footprint. We're expanding it a little bit so that we can fit both dumpsters in there to make sure it's fully enclosed. And that's a truck's material, just to make sure from a maintenance standpoint, it holds up for the long term. We are not proposing any improvements in the right-of-way or in the driveways. Those are going to be existing to remain. We did agree to replace a sign that had fallen. This is this sign. It's in our property and essentially it says keep right. So if you're coming from this direction, you would know to use this driveway rather than go in the in the out. So we're putting that sign back up. It was previously, I guess, approved and had at some point been hit or removed. So that's re-proposed. This is landscape plan, so it doesn't call it out, but I can show you the call on there. And then we called out this sign, which I'm not sure if we had a label on it before, but essentially it's a, you know, a right turn only sign to make sure people are using those right turns. Other other than that, there's a handful of, I mean, the peer review letter was pretty extensive. I think we we responded to all those in response to comment letter, and I believe we're fairly well coordinated. There were some questions about existing conditions that we, again, back to the driveways and things on the DOT right-of-way that we're not proposing to do work in its DOT jurisdiction. So we're not really addressing a couple of those comments in the peer review letter. Again, it's not part of this project. It's not really in our jurisdiction or ability to change some of those things that they're asking for. So I think other than those couple of items, we're well coordinated, I think, hopefully with with your comments with the peer review letter. And then the last update I suppose I have is on the Conservation Commission side. We did meet with them following our last meeting. And they they requested that we file a full stormwater permit application and a full notice of intent. That has to do with the wetlands across the street. As you can see, we're very minimally in their jurisdiction, but at their request, we're just giving them, we're going to go through the full NOI proposal, the stormwater permit application. We've got that meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. So I think that's the high-level updates. Again, I just McDonald's is really trying hard, hopefully, to get this into construction before Thanksgiving. We still need to go through the Conservation Commission and naturally any additional meetings with the planning board, but any any ability to just consider that and some of the the comments and decision-making tonight would be appreciated. Turn it back to Madam Chair and appreciate your time.
Sorry, couldn't find my couldn't find my unmute button. Thank you. So I think that's answered, I think, some of the questions that I had about the Conservation Commission and the screening, which had which had come up before. I think there were members of board that had a couple of questions on this project. If those questions haven't been fully answered, can can we, can you ask your question again while we're discussing the project?
I did. I had a couple of comments last time, but I think the the proposed changes have been addressed. So I think this these changes are appropriate, and I don't have any any other concerns.
Thanks, Marcela.
I have some questions on the cuing. Can you can you review specifically, like start and end to get your distances where that was and then on the entrance with the double order point, like what stacking you allow there? I guess it's kind of the same question version, but just to explain exactly how that was calculated.
Sure, just make sure I understood the question. You just wanted to understand from the existing site where the stacking calculations were versus the proposed relative to the drive.
Or sure, I just, I guess, just look at this, and this is what you want to know.
So you're just asking, where does the stacking line start? Where do you start the measurement? And then where do you end the measurement? Is that the question, Kate?
Yes, and then particularly at the entrance where it goes off to a double order point, but how much stacking was allowed there to what point?
Okay.
Got it. So all of the the, you know, the stacking, we started at the property line. And then in the proposed condition, obviously, you've got stacking here that would go around to the second window. So that would be a distance, and then you'd have a couple more car ability to stack in here as well. And then under existing conditions, the same, we start at the beginning and then go through.
So on your calculations you gave, what's that footage? And then I guess that was my concern because I I don't know the right answer, but that I believe you're measuring to the roadway, which is not a right of way. And I'm not sure it matters if you have enough space, but I I think that that needs to be clear.
Sure, I can clear that for you now. So I guess, under existing conditions, we've got 281 feet of stacking. Under proposed, we have 362. So it's a significant improvement, almost, you know, eighty eighty feet of additional stacking, suppose. And regardless, I mean, it doesn't matter where we measure it from. If you measure it from here, ten feet in, it's still going to be an improvement. So there there is definitely a significant improvement over existing conditions.
I guess, Eric, you're measuring the two existing and new from the same starting point.
Correct.
Okay.
So we would lose, we would lose space coming to the right-of-way and then sort of usable to make the other line useful. And I'm not trying to split hairs. I just want to say that we do have the common understanding of what is included and how it's calculated.
I don't understand how how you're suggesting we're losing space under the proposed condition.
From what you're from what you're showing me right now, you're going to through the right-of-way. And then a second car couldn't actually come in to use the other space the way it's drawn. So I think you'd have to shorten up toward the building, the queue lane of the lane that's closest to the building to allow to use the queue space on the others, other than the second queue space.
So, you know, cars, I think I get what you're what you're saying. So if a car was to stack, even if a car did happen to stack back this far, and again, we don't expect that to happen under normal operating conditions. If if these were, if if these stacks were were short, if there's only one car here, you're not going to see the stack back here. Those cars are just going to migrate out to to use that outside lane. So you know, they would just leave this lane and then use utilize the space on the outside.
Does that answer your question, Kate?
I I'm used to getting just exact footages and measurements, but I guess so. I mean, it seems like it wouldn't be hard to get. Why is it? It's fine. It's fine.
Well, I'm not sure. I'm just not sure what you're why this measurement isn't exact for you for you, what you're looking for. You're looking for a tip off the right-of-way, like the five or 10 feet at the beginning? That isn't part of the
right of way. And and allowing where assuming cars are still coming around and using both lanes. I mean, I, look, I appreciate that someone's saying improvement. This is a busy road. It will be expected more traffic, unlike the applicant said, and it's about safety and it's where I think the last look to get this right. Disappointed there's no actual data of counting cars. I mean, I don't know what they there must have been a reason that McDonald's said, I think I want more staffing. I don't think they did it just for no reason. And now we're changing something that we might not better is great. Is it going to be what we need? I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Do you want me to address address it as best that I can? I mean, I
Yeah, sure.
One more shot. So so the way you count trip generation to the site based on ITE, you know, industry standard way to to figure out trip generation. When you look at a quick serve restaurant, you look at the area of the building. You look at the seat count, and you look at the existing traffic on the the existing roadways. We're not changing anything on this proposal that will change the trip generation to the site. We're only adding stacking space, and we're making it more efficient. So we're just trying to make the existing drive-through traffic flow through more efficiently and reduce stacking on the site. We're also able to, just by the way of how this is working out, it's also adding additional stacking space, but that's not the primary goal. The primary goal is to get the second order point, which will make it more efficient. That's the whole purpose of the of the project. If we do counts of the existing site, it doesn't really change what we can do to make it better. We're doing everything we possibly can. We can't really move the building. We can't, you know, develop on someone else's property, make this any better than we've made it. But it is a significant improvement over the existing conditions. McDonald's is looking at all of their properties just to do the right thing to make sure, you know, you don't have stacking back to the street, regardless of which properties. They're just trying to keep up with the times. The pandemic has sent a lot of traffic through drivethrus, not a McDonald's thing, any other quick serve, anything with a drive-through, seeing more trips to their drive-through.
So there's Well, and which is which is not based on a this roadway is expected improvement. There's a nineteen million dollar roadway improvement to develop commercial, et cetera. So it's expected to have more traffic. I mean, but there is another way, which would be the side to have substantially more of doing. And I'm not saying you should do that, but but we should be clear. There is an option.
To do what?
You could go in the sideways, not not off Pond Street if you needed additional staff.
Off of Nickerson?
It's already an entrance in Mexico. I I'm not proposing. I'm just saying I like to be clear that there is another way to do it. It's not that there's no other way. You're choosing not to do it.
I think that would be a deal killer for McDonald's to limit access to their existing property.
Yeah, I think I think that that finally, you saying that comment, Kate, finally maybe got me to understand what you were what you were getting at. It was kind of really hard to understand what what exactly was your concern. So 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 that's good. So, yeah, I mean, I think, well, you know, let me see. Are there any other questions from from the board on this project or anyone else who has something to what, you know, to add on this conversation?
I do have related if no one else does. So it's not the independent report talked about that curve to send traffic to the right is pretty important, and that's obliterated right now for the Pond Street project. And it appears that it is not the applicant's work, but I think that should be sort of reconciled about safety somehow with this project.
What what curve exactly is that, Kate?
Um, you'll see that there's a divider that's half gone now in the very front of the drawing. Yeah, right, where if you went up from where your mouse is that, and that's about probably exactly where that dotted line is. That's the right-of-way. That is that is missing due to the due to the 126 project.
That so that you're saying it's not there right now, but
Yes, part of it is not there about exactly at that line.
Believe it's your construction. It's not not finalized. I'm assuming they're going to put it back as as it was before.
Yeah, and it was, it looks like it's not exactly. I mean, that was an issue again, the third party about that curve is important, and I think it's not on the hundred percent drawings quite the same. So if that's important, you should probably try to figure out how to communicate that.
So I'm seeing underneath the very front part of that, I see a dashed line that is not aligned with the solid line. Is that what you're talking about? Is that the part that's different?
I sent a picture to Peter.
Yeah, I saw it, and I just had troubles pointing it out. So I mean, I don't know if somehow you can point it out on the screen or have Eric pointed out.
I think it's about where that dotted line is. That's the that I believe is the DOT right-of-way.
Okay, Kate, I'm trying to understand. So that that work and the work on the on the highway is not part of this project. And presumably, the constructor of the road has to finish up and touch up every curb cut as it was or as the project relates. So that would not have any incumbents into what we're talking for this project, right?
I don't entirely agree with that. If it's about making sure this is the safest possible way.
But the project is not proposing. It is proposing any changes. So so that's outside the scope of these proposals. It would have to be a new proposal.
Well, I guess if we have no no concerns about that it syncs up with the mass DOT, then I would agree.
Well, this plan does sync up what we've reflected the their hundred percent plans on our set. That's how this is coming about. So I don't know how they'll build it, but this is we're reflecting all the sidewalk work, and then the small changes in here would reflect their plans that that I can assure you.
Right now, like some of your signage is sort of blocking the stop sign and all that. So apparently, that's not going to change either. So we don't need to talk about it.
Um, yeah, obviously, we can only talk about the things in our power to control, but I assume SDOT, I mean, would be looking at signage and how things goes up to in redoing their whole, the whole street. But yeah, it's against, it's outside of our application. I'm not sure who would be the proper person to address that to. Peter, do you know?
Yeah, well, I think the biggest thing is, I think, the applicant is proposing to restore the site to its proper form with the with the right-hand only turn. I was trying to quickly look at the hundred percent plans that I have that are actually up on the town website. But I believe, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, then the proposal here is to is to restore what was what was allowed, what was previously here with a right-hand turning.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm happy to condition. I think we're happy to we can condition that, Kate, within the approval process. And 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 while I quickly look, I'm pretty sure and I can confirm that mass DOT is going to replicate the existing right-hand turn only out of Pond Street, excuse me, oh, to Pond Street. I'm just trying to filter through a couple of fairly large file. So if anybody
I would assume once it's built, mass DOT is probably going to have some sort of moratorium that wouldn't even let us change what they're going to build out there very soon. So I just want to be careful that we don't get conditioned on something we can't change, and DOT is not going to approve. Just want to point that out.
Well, I'm happy also to reach out to DOT from the town, from the town staff perspective and have that conversation with them. In the meantime, just so we are all on the same page and to make sure that, you know, McDonald's and the planning board are obviously still are all on the same page regarding this right-hand turn over.
And if you if you want to back up on the plan, Eric, if you could, to show the whole site. Yep. And I also want to address Kate's comment that the the second exit out onto Nickerson is being removed. Is that right?
Second exit onto Nickerson.
So the current exit into Nickerson, is that remaining or or?
Yeah, that will remain. There's no changes proposed.
That's remaining as is. Okay.
Correct, yep.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I can I can see where there might be a different possibility of another traffic flow, definitely not being an expert in these types of things myself. But I also wonder if they would cause additional problems you know, with safety and traffic as well. So so for me, I have no problem with the with the two entrances and exits remaining as is and the additional capacity. The improvement in the capacity in in the McDonald's property line. Any other comments from the members of the board on on any of this? If not, I will, I I will open it up to public comment. If anyone has comments on the 220 to 25 Pond Street. Mark DeSoni, if you want to unmute.
Thank you. It won't won't take long. Mark DeSoni, 49 Hawthorne Road. I would, it would help if we got up the up-to-date at design with without these lines and explanations that the one that came up the first tonight. The one that came up the first tonight. No, I can ask my question.
Would you like Eric to switch to the other more visual plan?
Yes.
Okay, can you do that, Eric?
Yes, of course.
Okay, yes, thank you. Now, it, the improvement, w- w- one of the improvements was up at the, um, the top. Where the, uh, converge would be, right, may improve it there. Top right where the two islands miss meets.
Sure, yeah.
That is a great room because you're making a cautious idea of both lanes. And you're making a cautious thing for the drivers on the, on that smaller side to take that turn and still see. What's there in front of them, which is a good thing. So I'm happy, I'm happy to see that. But I'm also looking at the, um, the dotted lines above. Going towards the back parking spaces, yes, what would that indicate?
That's just our limit of work, so we're just showing where the work is happening on this site. So it's, it won't be onsite, it's just a visually, visualization for everyone to, to know where the work is happening.
Okay, so when the construction happens, the, the asphalt that's there and the parking spaces there, they're all gonna stay within what they originally are, right?
Correct, anything outside of, of that line would stay as, as is.
Okay, and the Nixon Road exit, what was talked about, and, um. That's gonna stay as is and can be either right or left turn, right, left, right going up Nixon and left going down one twenty-six. How it originally was at, at the beginning, right?
Uh, correct, we're not making any changes to Nickerson driveway.
Okay, so my, the little bit thing is the, um, the entrance, where you gotta put up the new, uh, turn right only. Coming in and turn right to one twenty-six, that's, that was originally when McDonald's was first there, a turn right only. And had, they had police detail in the very early to McDonald's business, taking tickets, if people tried to take the left turn. I, I remember when McDonald's first came back around in the seventies. I kinda was watching that from the parking lot, watching the police come over and stopping the vehicles immediately, so. That right turn is gonna be a necessity. All else, this is a good updated plan, and I thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Um, any other questions from the planning board?
I was able to find the one twenty-six plans on the town website, and it looks like what was shown here, where that, that light dash line that you see. When we zoomed in, is the existing condition, and the, our line is what's shown in the one twenty-six hundred percent designs.
Sorry, Kevin, can you repeat that, cuz you, you went in and out there a little bit on, on that?
When we were zoomed in on the island there, uh, there was a very light dashed line. There you go, that's the one there, so the light dashed line is the existing condition of that island, and the dark line is the proposed from the one twenty-six project.
Okay.
The only thing I could tell for why they did that is when I scaled the drawing, there's a, a little bit of a pinch point at the end there, where you get underneath a thirteen-foot lane. So I'm assuming they're trying to get you a standard turning lane width. Um, uh, like I said, that's part of the mast off project, so if we needed to. Keep the island the way that it was, we'd have to back to them.
Okay. Great, thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Peter, question to you, um. Which criteria do we need to, in the bylaws, do we need to go through in regard to this project? Do we need to go through the overlay district?
For this, this is just site plan only.
This is like, so the special permit is because. Like it's Pond Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review, are there two sets of criteria that we need to go through?
Sorry, go ahead, Peter.
Uh, Eric, no, you go ahead, I was gonna pull, I was gonna pull it up.
Yeah, I think the special permit is for the signage, and that would be considering the new menu board is my understanding of, of why we. Submitted the special permits.
Yeah, so the special permit is for the signage, uh, I just had to, uh, remind myself. Um, and then, uh, which is, which is the electronic side, cuz the, what is proposed is the illuminated menu boards, which are gonna be stepped back on the property. Um, but yes, it's gonna be site plan, and then the signed special permit for the, uh, illuminated.
Okay, so we're looking at nine point three point two, um, criteria for special permit.
Uh, yes.
And, um, I don't have the numbers in front of me for the. For the other one.
Yeah, I'm looking for my, uh, bylaws right now, excuse me.
Um, I, I think I'd like to just take a couple minutes tonight to start to go through some of those, again, these are criteria, these aren't. Conditions for approval, these are things that we need to go through to, um. As, as a part of the, the, the voting process. So criteria for special permits, I'm just gonna list these off. I think it actually would be good to keep that, to keep the drawing up if we could, if people have. Okay, so this is, this is nine point three point two, the criteria under special permits. So criteria number one is community needs served by the proposal. We're not, uh, changing any, um, use for the building, so I'm not sure how applicable that is. Criteria two, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, I think this was the primary part of the discussion, both. Here and in the Design Review Committee, is that right? Emma, where the, um, handicapped parking spaces change locations?
Uh, that was through the zoning board of appeals.
Zoning Board of Appeals, sorry. Yep, okay, um. Number three is adequacy of utilities and other public services, those I believe would be unchanged. Number four, neighborhood character and social structures. Number five, impacts on the natural environment, and six, potential fiscal impact. Including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. I know people may not have those in front of them, again, it's nine point three point two. Does anyone have any comments that I don't, that they don't feel were adequately discussed so far regarding those criteria that they would wanna bring up?
Um, the nine point three point two point six, I, I don't know that we have to have information to say it's not. But I don't think I've seen anything. On that, so if, if I was asked about right now, I would say not applicable. Unless there's other information I didn't see, but I can try to scrub stuff.
I guess, um, question for Eric, is there any, um. Increase in town services, um. Being directed to the site, any, any changes in water, power, sewer?
No, none, none of the municipal utilities, um, would be increased based on this project, and I just offer that. Uh, just continuing an existing business and making sure that there is profitable, is that they can be, and making sure there's employment opportunities in town and. And tax revenue is, uh, obviously a fiscal benefit for the town.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so. Searching here for my. I'm going to, was there any other questions from the planning board on that? So for the site plan review and design plan review, review criteria, those are listed together on nine point four point six. Peter. I'm a little off my game, so please correct if I have anything wrong on that.
You got it.
So again, this is a list of twelve criteria, most of them don't apply to a project like this, but I'll read them through, and if one strikes you as, um. That needs to be discussed, please let me know, number one, minimize use of wetlands, steep slopes, floodplains, and hilltops. Number two, minimize obstruction of scenic views. Number three, preserve unique or natural, preserve unique natural or historical features. Number four, minimize tree vegetation and soil removal and grade changes. Number five, maximize open space retention. Number six, screen objectionable features from neighboring properties and roadways. Number seven, consideration shall be given to the impacts of the project on town services and infrastructure. Number eight, electric telephone, cable television. Gas, water, sewer, drainage, and other such utilities shall be kept underground, except in cases of extreme physical and environmental constraints. Number nine, exposed storage areas, machinery, service, truck loading areas, utility buildings and structures, and other unsightly uses. Shall be set back or screened to protect the neighbors and those using public ways from objectionable features. Such areas shall not impede the flow of traffic on public ways. Number ten, when applicable, the site plan shall show measures to reduce and abate noise generated from the site that will impact surrounding properties. Number eleven, the site plan shall comply with all zoning requirements for parking, loading, signage, dimensions, and environmental performance standards. And all other provisions of this bylaw. Number twelve, the site plan should be consistent with the objectives of the comprehensive plan, oop, and other applicable specific plans adopted by the planning board. So. Question about parking, parking still, I know you talked about removing a few spaces in order to provide a better, um. A better turn, um, near that buffer zone, I assume we still have the spaces, including handicap spaces that we need for the facility, there's no waiver being asked for there.
That is correct, so this, read the numbers, um, twenty-nine are required, we're proposing forty. That would require two accessible parking spaces, about three by town, uh, reg- reg- regulation, so we've got the three accessible stalls. So it's on a compliant relative to parking.
Okay, are there any other, um, any other comments about those criteria from the planning board, anything that, that people feel need to be addressed? Okay. So seeing none, I think we are. You still, you still need to go through the process, um, through Conservation Commission. Um, is that right? So they, they have asked for some things.
Yes.
And, um, but as, as far as, I'm, I'm seeing that the planning board has no further. Comments or suggestions to, um, give to the applicant, so that when they come back, those things can be addressed. Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to. Like I say, that we're probably good for this evening, that we, it can be in the meeting minutes, that we had no further comment on the project, no further requests. Are being made of the applicant, and that we will then. Peter, as appropriate, wait for it to go through Conservation Commission, and, and unless, in case something changes there that, that we may need to address. Is that appropriate?
I think that's okay, you know, I think, uh, sometimes it's, it's okay to go before transformation, but I think in the meantime, Eric, when are you going through the Conservation Commission next, please?
Uh, I believe on the twenty-second of this month.
Okay, so our next meeting actually is gonna be on the twenty-fifth, I believe, uh, it's gonna be a fairly packed agenda. Um, could do some big projects coming up, but I think maybe, and, and Eric, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, if you're, if you're obliged. Uh, we continue the matter to the twenty-seventh, and then in the meantime, I can start drafting a decision as appropriate, uh, to the board.
Yes, I, I think that, um, if we can get out. Um, a draft decision, that then we can offer comments on, make sure that everything is in there that we want in there, and then, um. We would wait to take an official vote, um, on the app, on the, the applica- on the, um, approval. Um, as written.
I think that's appropriate, um, and also in the meantime, I'll follow up with that DOT to check in on the, uh, exit, entrance and exit, uh, from the Pond Street.
Okay, so, I will. I will make a motion that this application is, um, the special permit, um, is continued to. Are we continuing it then to August twenty, twenty-fourth, and Peter?
I'm gonna check the date, uh, I saw, Eric, you're in, you're in agreement that a continuance is the best move at this point?
Yes, yep, that would be appreciated.
Awesome, yeah, if you can, uh, send me an email, that'd be great, uh, we're gonna meet on the twenty-fifth of August, that is.
Okay. But this, we will, um, I will make a motion that this, um, the two twenty-five Pond Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review is continued, and continued till August twenty-fifth. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, and a roll call vote?
Ask for Jersey guide.
Anna Tassmanitsky, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I, so we are continued till August twenty. Um. Yeah, so Peter, if you can, um, have those conditions, um, send them out early so that people have a lot of time to review them and respond. Um, with everyone's busy end of summer schedules, that would be appreciated. Right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, um, we have one hundred Chestnut Street Site Plan Review. Continued from the July twenty-eighth meeting, um, Peter. Can I give this back to you for an introduction?
Uh, sure, so at the planning board last meeting, uh, but to number one, first introduce, uh, Mr. Roy McDowell, based on development. His team is in Todd and Matt Marata from Icon Architects, and there's a few other team, I'm just gonna to. Excuse my, uh, excuse, excuse me. Uh, so with that said, at last meeting, we did talk about this project, and we talked about, um, the next steps and what we were looking for. There's a, there's a number of things, um. But the main point is the board, uh, at the last meeting, really asked for all reviews of the entire project. Uh, and the applicant sent us eighteen, uh, pieces of information that were sent over to, um, to us. Um, and they were posted on our website, and they were put out for everyone's, um, review. I know there's been some conversation, uh, concerning the covenants, um, and that gave from the last meeting. Uh, and with that, I, I, we do have Lisa Lee here, the town council, uh, who's been asked to, to help us answer any questions that we do have. That may come up, um, and that is the, the, the biggest overall, I, I would say, at, at the high level. But I think, uh, based on developments here tonight, and they're, they're really looking to go over, um. The update, uh, letter that they sent over to us, uh, which was an email and a letter. And I'll also with eighteen attachments, and I think they were gonna go over from a, from a, I don't wanna say thirty thousand square foot view, uh, thirty thousand. View, but from a thirty thousand foot view on the entirety of the project, where it sits, what has been, and what is being proposed. And, uh, how the, how the conversations had, had led us to, uh, tonight, I think that was at our request of the board, uh, from the last meeting, so. I, I hand it, I hand it back to you, uh.
Thank you, Peter, uh, with us this evening, we have Matt Marata from Icon Architecture, who will be discussing the architecture.
Roy, hold on a second.
I think, uh, I think Peter is handing it back to me, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But no, it, it's okay, because I, I actually don't have, uh. Um, anything else, we, we're, we can hear the presentation, and then we'll go from there, so, all yours.
Thank you very much, again, thank you. Um, as I mentioned, we have Matt Marata this evening to talk about architecture, we have, uh, Matt Leidner. To talk about the stormwater and site, Todd will pick up on some things, and I will start. Uh, if, Peter, if you could make the, uh, screen available to Todd for the slides.
Uh, excuse me, uh, Todd, you are now a co-host.
Thank you.
Uh, Matt, I will make you a co-host. Okay, you're awesome.
Well, thank you, now, some of this, we're gonna run through fairly quickly, cuz a lot of you've seen before. But I think it was expressed at our last meeting, because we've been doing this for about a year now. It's probably good to have a refresher, start and go through architecture, engineering, et cetera, et cetera, so we're all sort of. Seeing the whole package at once, so this is a frontal view, if we can go to the next one, please. Uh, you've all seen this, this is the amount of square footage of commercial, the amount of apartments, breakdown of unit types. The amount of parking, the amenity spaces, et cetera, next, please. I thought this was important to look at, because I know the last time we met, we were talking about hopefully closing us out the next two meetings, which hopefully. we were talking about hopefully closing us out the next two meetings, which hopefully be this, this one and the next. If you'll see, we started over a year ago in July, and you can see the litany of meetings we've had between design review committee, the planning board, et cetera, et cetera, down the line, including this evening's meeting. So it's been very, very extensive. Next, please. So we, we have responded to the peer review letters. Uh, Civil Design Group has responded and followed to G C G. I might also mention there was one question that came up at the last meeting that someone from C, C, uh, G C G commented on the retail drive-up area in front of the building and a reference to landscaping. So I called Mike Carter at G C G. He and I discussed it and says, it really doesn't need anything. They're used to seeing the commercial being in the back of a building, not on the front. So he said, understanding what it is, he really has no further comment and thought it was fine. I believe he sent an email to Peter on that. Also, we got a new, uh, report from Mueller on the traffic, which we've responded to that as well. And there were a couple of comments made, I think it was either G C G or Mueller on the crosswalk in the front of the building, which we made some adjustments to reflect that. Also, we've sent you a comments that we did go over last meeting on the site plan approval conditions for the previous project.
Next, Roy, Roy, if I may just jump in for a second, uh, we did send in a response letter this afternoon. I know the, the board wouldn't have had a chance to, to, uh, look at it yet, but, uh, taking all of, uh, Ron Mueller associates' comments into consideration and making those, giving that information or making those changes. And I believe, uh, we're gonna have Matt Leidner talk about the next slide about what changes, uh, have been made regarding uh, the comments in the G C G letter as well as the most recent comments from Ron Mueller.
Okay, next, please.
Now, we're gonna have it Matt Leidner speak.
Great. Good evening, uh, everybody. Matt Leidner with Civil Design Group. Um, so at the last meeting with the planning board, uh, we had just received a, a second peer review letter from G C G uh, with a handful of remaining comments. So the vast majority had been addressed to their satisfaction. There were a handful of remaining comments. Uh, and we talked through them at the last meeting um, and committed out at, at the conclusion to, um, submit a, a formal response to those comments. And we have since done that. Um, so just to, to run through them quickly, uh, and again, these were, these were all talked about at the last meeting. Um, we have committed to an additional soil test pit in the footprint of the proposed infiltration system. Once the existing buildings and utilities on the site are decommissioned to a point where we can safely dig in that area. Um, so we're, we're, um, okay and willing to accept a condition to that effect and G C G was okay uh, and comfortable with the design, uh, to the, the point that they thought a condition would be fine, uh, to that effect. Uh, the, the roof drain pipe for the refuse building, uh, up in the top right corner there, we had a a piped connection into the drainage system. G C G asked that we remove the pipe and actually let the roof runoff flow sufficiently into the nearest catch basin. Uh, so we have updated the plans to do just that. Um, there were two instances on the plans where utilities, uh, utility pipes or, or drainage and a utility pipe uh, where they crossed, they did not have, um, an extensive amount of clearance between the two pipes. And we were able to resolve that and, and separate the two pipes a bit more, uh, at their request. So the plan's been updated to do that. They asked that we update the drain manhole detail to include a, a trough through the bottom of the manhole, similar to what a sewer manhole would have. Uh, just helps direct the water coming into the manhole, uh, help direct it out of the manhole a little bit better. We've updated the detail accordingly on that. Lastly, regarding G C G's comments, they asked that in the stormwater operation and maintenance plan uh, where we had quarterly inspections of the catch basin sumps. They asked that we also include the grates in, in that quarterly inspection routine. So to inspect the grate, just to make sure that if there's any blockages, uh, on the grate itself, it leaves or, or any kind of debris accumulates on the grates where the water can't get in the way it should, that that get cleaned off. So we've updated the stormwater O N M plan accordingly to include the grates in the, uh, in, in the quarterly inspection. Um, so that took care of everything remaining in the G C G letter. Uh, and that information was submitted by, by based on. Um, as Todd just mentioned and Roy, we more recently, um, on the first of August received the Ron Mueller letter uh, relative to the traffic peer review. Um, there were just a, a couple of things that we had to do on, on, uh, relative to that on the site plan. Uh, one was that, uh, originally on this plan uh, out along Chestnut Street in the parking lot, but on the Chestnut Street side of the buildings, uh, the, the walkway that led into the site from the Chestnut Street walkway was on the south side, which is, uh, planned right. Uh, the way we're looking at it, uh, we had a crosswalk going across the drive aisle there. Subsequently, that, that pedestrian connection to Chestnut Street moved to the north side of the, the entrance where it is shown, uh, currently on the plan. You can see it to the left of the entrance there, crosses, uh, oh, yes, right there. Um, and we inadvertently never deleted the crosswalk on the south side. So um, we, we basically had a crosswalk to nowhere remaining on the plan. So we deleted that crosswalk, uh, as, as should have been done earlier uh, with the revisions. Uh, so now we have the, the pointed connections on the, the north side of the entrance leads pedestrians from Chestnut Street crosswalk, uh, sidewalk that is up into the, the site. So that has been taken care of. And we've also, uh, added, they requested that we show the sightlines at both, uh, driveways. So Justice Street driveway and the Queen Isabella driveway, that we show those sightlines on the site plan. So I believe those had been submitted already via exhibits.
Yes, it, it's not on this particular sheet, but it is on the plan submitted.
Right, so the, the, the most recently submitted plan set has been updated to show those sightlines, uh, both at both driveways, which are, uh, more than adequate. Uh, it was just a matter of they thought they should be reflected on the site plan in addition to any exhibits that had been previously submitted. So we've updated the site plan to show those sightlines. Lastly, the Ron Mueller letter had um, asked that at the, on the bottom left of the page here, at the intersection of Chestnut Street and Queen Isabella Way. Um, there's sort of a, a strange situation existing with the two sidewalks where the Chestnut Street sidewalk kind of dead ends and, and dumps you out into Chestnut Street and Queen Isabella dead ends and dumps you out into Queen Isabella, uh, way, that is. Um, but the two sidewalks were not connected for, for whatever reason. So, uh, we have updated the plan to connect those two sidewalks. So now, uh, a- after that's done, a, a pedestrian could, could walk from Chestnut sidewalk to Queen Isabella or vice versa, without having to go into the street at all. Um, and provided a new, uh, ramp down to the existing crosswalk to the, the opposite side of Queen Isabella Way. So it sort of cleans up what was, uh, um, kind of left hanging, uh, at that intersection in terms of the, the sidewalk. Um, so, and that's it. So the most recent, uh, submission had those, those few last changes on it. Uh, they're all set. And, uh, with that, I'll turn it back over to Todd. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And I am going to hand it over to, I'll, I'll, I'll just talk through this. This is an existing site plan. You've seen this. This just gives you a kind of a locus where the site is versus the, uh, rest of the, uh, Merka Village, those in Americas. Matt Marato did to take over.
Sure. Thank you, uh, for the record, Matt Marato with Icon Architecture. Um, so just a few images of some of the surrounding structures, uh, the existing commercial buildings on the site. Um, an existing commercial building across the site and the town, typical townhouses behind us. Next, uh, early on, we presented to you all a, uh, this site plan showing our site constraints and where our buildable area is. And, uh, that's how we started the process of figuring out how to lay out the site. Um, and next. Um, here we are today with our rendered landscape site plan, uh, placed in context with the surrounding townhouses. Also note that there's the, uh, the blue cer-, uh, square plan left there, uh, for the proposed dog park. Um, and at the intersection, um, there's also a bus stop that we were proposing, which we'll show later on. Um, but if you do recall, uh, this, the site plan was a bit different earlier on. Um, our buildings were in a different configuration. We spent a lot of time with you all, uh, figuring out how to best allocate the exterior space for, um, public use and, uh, how to enliven and enriching the development with uh, the commercial space, um, and, uh, and put, and really, uh, help the interaction of pedestrian, commercial, um, interaction. Next. Uh, so what we ended up with was a courtyard space between the two commercial, uh, block ends there. Um, and we have a, uh, loading area out in the front as well, which last time we talked about, you guys had requested a perspective of, which we'll show later on. Um, but generally speaking, the plan now is, uh, some units on the ground floor. We do have some structured parking on the back side of the site. Um, the remainder of the front across Chestnut Street is commercial space, amenity space. And as we go into the perspectives, you'll see how we all, we have kept a strong retail presence, uh, and look along the whole frontage. Next. Going up through the building, we're a combination of, uh, ones and two-bedroom apartments, um, stacking all the way up. Next. Uh, we showed you before our roof, uh, layout, initial roof layout, showing that we will have this mansard uh, roof along the whole perimeter of both buildings, shielding all the mechanical equipment, um, that's inside of it. Uh, we've discussed that the building will be solar ready, uh, for future P V arrays on the building. Um, and that, uh, can be in place, uh, anytime. Next. Uh, the elevations illustrating, uh, I think these have come quite a long way since we first started with you all. Um, you know, we made sure to maintain a strong base middle on top. I think that was one of our original uh, intents from the beginning that we've held on to, um, also creating this village scale, um, and rhythm along all elevations. Next. Uh, just the side elevations. Next. Uh, we discussed how, uh, the townhouses behind us sit, uh, in relation to our site. Uh, we are carving out a bit of the site to depress it, um, and keep our building down low. Um, and oftentimes the, uh, townhouses behind us are equal height or a little bit under, a little bit lower. Next. Um, a section just showing you all how we are proposing to screen the mechanical elements, uh, behind. Um, so they are not visible from the street or the surrounding neighbors. Next. A perspective looking down Chestnut Street, uh, pulled back a bit to, uh, show in relation where the, uh, existing townhouses are. Um, we talked a bit about tree heights. These are accurately reflecting our, uh, day one tree installations. Um, and you can see that we, uh, in the perspectives, we've talked a lot about keeping a strong corner uh, element at the retail entry there, uh, and, uh, as you move down, the stepping with the dormers and the gable ends. Next. Moving into the site a little bit, uh, illustrating some of the interplay between the two commercial spaces with the public courtyard, uh, that can, uh, be accessed from either side. Uh, we introduced a lot of wood, warm wood elements to the elevations. Uh, we've kept windows in a similar, uh, look, uh, across all elevations. Um, and also look to break down the scale of the residential above. Next. Uh, this is a new perspective or tuning perspectives rather that you have not seen before. Uh, looking at the loading area specifically, I think this illustrates how this could be used, uh, either during the day for uh, residents or, uh, someone utilizing the commercial space to quickly use it as a drop-off pickup. Um, but also for larger loading, uh, as well. Um, the landscape area to the right is just a kind of schematic look at what is currently illustrated in the landscape plans. Next. Coming around the building, now we're focusing more on our main residential entry where we've changed the scale and looked a little bit of the building elements and going to more flat roof elements, uh, the, the bays, uh, following along Chestnut Street, um, and turning into the larger, uh, tower element for the residential entry. Next. View from behind, uh, you can lightly see the outline of the proposed arborvitie screening that is gonna be in place blocking the majority of the buildings beyond. Next. Um, a composite image that shows our building in relationship with the actual surrounding, uh, townhouses. This is taken from right in the middle of the site where there is this existing, uh, common area for the condos. Um, and you can see again, the arbor of strong arbor, dense arborvitie, uh, screening wall provided at the edge of our site. Next. Coming into the backside a little closer, so you can now see what's happening. Um, and we talked a lot about this, uh, as well. We've added gable peaks to the rooftops, pushed the elevations in certain locations in to help break up the the long elevation of the roof. Um, and we've shown the, uh, bay, uh, the gable and bays as a color, uh, before, I think, and originally we were white, and I think this has come to a, a nice, happy place for not too much uh, color and enough to vary it. Next. We talked about the screening. Uh, I think we're all on board for a dark gray, uh, material uh, for both the frame and the infill to help screen, but maintain the open garage that we were proposing to do. Next. The, we discussed a lot about a safe place for, uh, the neighborhood to come and pick up the bus. Um, so we have proposed a bus shelter location at the edge of the site here. Next. Um, and going through design review committee and the planning board, this is where we have landed with the proposed bus shelter. Something very natural looking that fits well within the wooded area, um, and does not stand out like it's, uh, uh, pre-built, uh, metal fabricated element, uh, with plenty of seating, wind screening on either side um, and light as well for, uh, nighttime. Next. And I will pass it back to Roy.
Okay, thank you, Matt. So this is a rendered, uh, landscape plan, which I think we'll go move on from this into the next one. The so we had, we had quite a bit of discussion with the design review committee and with the planning board relative to the amount of native plant material. Now, when we started with the plan, I think we were somewhere under sixty percent. We've since changed the plan. Not only have we added more plant material, we've changed the plan to now have an excess of seventy-five percent of native plant material, which I know was a desire in the part of both boards. So I'm hoping that works well. Uh, if we could go on to the next one, please. So this is, this is the revised plant list of plant material. Uh, we've sent this in, when, it, when you have a moment, you can take a look at it. But we thought it'd be very helpful to give you some visual images of the various plant material. So you can see the various species of trees. On the next page, you will see detail of some of the small plant material. And on the next page. Oh, okay, so that's the planting. Now, Todd, you can take the photometrics, please.
Sure. So this is a revised photometric plan. Uh, I believe we actually showed this to you at the last meeting. Though we actually, uh, hadn't submitted it to your board yet because we had to adjust our, uh, pole heights down from twenty feet to fifteen. And we didn't have time to get that to, uh, to the board before the last meeting, but this is the same one that you had seen in the last, uh, presentation. And it is, uh, that we, we increased the number of lights because the, uh, pole heights came down. So, um, that's the photometric plan that was submitted. Um, back, uh, this was part of the presentation we did regarding parking spaces and parking demand back in March, I believe. And that was a- also part of the, uh, M D M write-up on what the required number of spaces uh, for a typical residential, uh, development like this is, it's all based off I T E standards, which is the, uh, trip generation and, uh, the most recent addition. Um, and as we're saying, the typical parking demand, it typically for multifamily housing complexes, one point one, one point three one to one point four seven spaces per unit. And when we look at a bunch of area observed, uh, multifamily complexes arranged in, in And when we look at a bunch of area observed multifamily complexes arranged in that range, one point two nine to one point five four spaces per unit, which is still less than what we are proposing. When looking at peak demand, it's typically overnight parking. It's estimated that the peak demand for residential and it would be two hundred and twenty-seven to two hundred and fifty-six spaces that filled out an occupancy. It's well below the three hundred and forty-eight residential spaces that we're providing. The potentially ninety extra spaces. So when we're providing fewer for the commercial, it's really more than enough because we're providing shared parking. The only parking that is going to be exclusively residential is the forty-four garage spaces. And then when you look at a per bedroom rate, because this project has only ones and two, one bedroom and two bedroom units, and we're actually heavier weighted towards the ones. That that ratio of how many spaces you need is actually even less than when you look at it just on a per basis, a per unit basis. So when you calculate this way, we potentially have over a hundred and forty excess spaces that we're proposing to build. I did notice in one of the comment letters, I think it was Ron Mueller, as he mentioned that we are proposing the land bank sixty parking spaces. We are, we are not proposing to land bank anywhere. We're going to build all three hundred and fifty-seven spaces. And really that any additional, it most likely never be needed. Here are a, just, we went over this last meeting as well, just where the EV charging stations are and the bike rack. And again, I think on our submittal, we included an area showing some conduit that we've run there for expansion of these EV charging stations as more people drive electric cars in the future, we'll be able to expand with the demand for EV charging stations. We also, I think the board requested, based on one of the comments in the two thousand and six site plan approval conditions, that we take a look at the water supply and demand for this project. We did, I did that and submitted a written report about that. And it shows that the maximum day domestic use, basically the maximum demand for use. There is plenty of water capacity there as well as for when a fire truck comes and uses the stand pipe hose and sufficient pressure as well. And then there's also sufficient fire suppression for the sprinkler demand while a fire hose is connected. So you, as you can see on the conclusion, and if you've looked through the report, it shows that there is sufficient water pressure and supply for this site in this project. This, I think the board has to take a look at our snow storage area. This is the area in the rear of the site, we would store snow. I think we estimated it would hold about a five to six inch storm. Anything large than that, we would have to truck offsite. We do that at other projects during large storms where we have a contract with our snow removal service. When there's no room for storage, that we trucked it offsite. This is the proposed dog park plan. You've seen this. We would come down Chestnut Street and build this new kind of walkway pathway to the proposed dog park, which would be blockchain length fence with a double entry. So you walk in the first one, let your dog off leash and then go in. And we keep it a natural look, kind of like some of the other local area dog parks. Leave as many of the larger trees, maybe take down some of the saplings that you see over here, here, just to end the weeds to clear out the space for the dogs to play. And I think that is it. Happy to go to the board and see if there's anything we didn't go over that you'd like to hear from us, or if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right. We will be going on to questions, but before we do that, we have we want to, we want to address something else. We have Lisa Need here at our meeting tonight. She's town council. And there has been some questions going back and forth to try to, for the board to try to understand the very complex nature of the site and the history of the site in terms of the various covenants that have, that have come up in recent years. So Lisa Need, oh, I see, right in the middle of my screen. It's just here to try to explain, review and explain the situation for clarity to the planning board and to anyone else in our audience. Lisa, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Tricia, and members of the board. It's great to see all of you. And I think in recent years, using the term loosely, Tricia, the first covenant was adopted in two thousand and two, and then there was an attempted adoption of a covenant, which was adopted, but didn't go into effect in two thousand and nine. So the two thousand and two covenant does apply to this property. It applies to all of the properties that was then owned in Mount Parta Village of America. So any of the conditions that are in there would apply to this project if they are applicable, if you will. There's only one that in my initial review stuck out to me, and that regards the contribution and mitigation payment related to the construction of non-residential property or non-residential square footage. And the donation, I think it is a thousand square, a thousand dollars per square foot feet of non-residential area. In two thousand and nine, there was, and this was before my time involved in this project. But there was an obvious attempt to do some reconfiguring of the covenant. It's my understanding that Mr. Fafford was offering to construct a football field and do some other things in exchange for some changes in the covenant. The covenant was signed. It's confusing because there are two dates and two separate covenants for the First Amendment. But it's the same thing. It was just one was adopted by the planning board. Same thing was adopted by the board's selectmen, and they stapled them together and reported them. So it looks like there's two, but it's actually only one. They just put them together because there were two different signatures. In any event, the two thousand and nine amended covenant was certainly recorded. However, it was contingent on taking effect for the passage of the zoning. The zoning did not pass. And so therefore, the covenant did not take effect. And so the, the conditions in that covenant are not effective as against this project or any project whatsoever. It's essentially null and void. So you're really looking at the first covenant. And from what I can tell, aside from the account, obviously the count to residential units, it's the mitigation payment that's applicable. And there may be a couple of other things that you will have to go through and make sure are picked up, but that's the, that's the covenant, Tricia. If there are anything else we can address related to that?
Um, I don't have any further questions, but are there questions from the board to make sure the covenant issue is, is clear?
Sure. I, I think one of my questions for Lisa is if the two thousand and two covenant applies and we as a board make decisions that shift some element of it. What is the significance of that? Does there need to be some kind of amendment? Does it need to be approved by the select board with, with us? What is the? What would, what would be the next step, if you will, if what we do as a, as a planning board somehow edits, if you will, what was agreed upon in that fairly old covenant?
You, you can't. It would have to go through the process of amendment and have to be mutually agreeable. So you can't unless that whole process takes place. So I'm not really sure. I'm not really sure if there are particular items in there that you think that's happening with. But the answer is there's a very specific process by which the covenant would be amended and you would have to follow that process.
And I think that's really helpful to hear. I think that's the first time I'm hearing it in this discussion so that we understand, hey, we got to follow this covenant exactly. And if we do something that is a little different, there is a very elaborate process. So
That's correct.
And that process would involve the select board, us, amendment, maybe even town meeting. Can you kind of walk us through what that would look like so that we understand it?
So it would, it would, it would apply to the, the successors and interest to Fafford. It would apply to the board's selectmen. It would apply to the planning board. I'm not sure that it would have to go to town meeting, but that almost positive, it doesn't have to go to town meeting. But you would have to negotiate whatever those changes are, and they could only affect the remaining portion of this. It would only be able to affect this property because everything else is already done. So it, it would, it would be a significant issue to try to change any of those items in the covenant, and it would take a mutual agreement by all of the parties. One party couldn't do it unilaterally.
In other words, we read the covenant, we're, we're stuck with it as is. What if there's disagreements between us, the planning board and the applicant as to what the covenant is saying? What, what do we do with that?
That's an interpretation, right? So we would have to take a look at what the interpretation is and why there is a disagreement on that interpretation. And to decide whether or not, you know, I'm not sure if there's an arbitration provision in here or mediation provision. But if you don't agree on the interpretation of the covenant, you would, you would have to go to the next step and have it, you know, potentially a declaratory judgment by a court to interpret it if there wasn't a mediation proposal. So.
So kind of as a live, as, yeah, as a live example, like the commercial space piece, right? Like we had all these discussions over multiple meetings with Roy about, hey, what does the covenant say about commercial space? And we kind of landed where we are now. So one way to look at that is it's sort of an interpretation of, we're almost like negotiating, right? So it's a little bit what the covenant actually says about commercial space has been up for debate. So now we're kind of having this discussion with the applicant about what that looks like. Do we as a planning board then need to have that approved by the select board if we decide that, hey?
So I think there's a couple of things. The question about the commercial space and when it could be built and how much can be built when in front of zoning board. And there was a question about the interpretation of that language. And again, I don't have that right in front of me, but and so the zoning board decided that, and that was never appealed. Whether it was properly in front of the zoning board is a whole other question, but nobody appealed it, and that's what it was. So I guess, you know, I, I didn't know there was a debate about how much commercial space should be in the project. I thought that it'd come down to the I believe you have ten thousand square feet in there now, right? So
Yeah, we're not debating that.
Yeah. So it, I, I mean, I, I don't think that's up, I don't think that's up for debate. But if it were, it would, there would be an interpretation issue. And if the parties mutually agreed on what the interpretation was, you're done. If all the parties, planning board, board selectmen, applicant, landowner agreed on what the interpretation is, then you're fine because you've agreed on the interpretation. If there's a disagreement on that, then you'd have to go to the next step. Just like any contract, it's a contract.
So I have a follow-up. I think it's related to that, and I've been trying to piece this together. We, the covenant was approved for phases. What, what is in front of us has to do with phase eight. And I believe that was for twenty-one thousand square feet of commercial and a hundred and twenty units. And now this is still phase eight, but we're altering. And I'm definitely confused of how what I guess are rights and responsibilities of the planning board to line up with phase eight. I guess phase eight either separate or related to the covenant, both.
So the, the development itself was done in phases based upon a site plan, right? So it was agreed that it would be done in various site plans. So once the site plan was approved for a particular phase, that was the, that was the process for that phase. They were allowed and are allowed, that's why they're here today, to seek to amend or file a new site plan for a particular phase.
So the phase eight that's partially built has, this is, I can't seem to get the maybe that's just because law doesn't necessarily have one answer because we are being told, I believe I'm, I'm getting this correct, that site conditions from the approved phase eight would be relevant if they're relevant to this project. So again, the applicant pointed out, there's a, the fire truck doesn't have to fit under the building because it doesn't or something. But we were told that we can, but now I'm saying it's not. So I really just would like to get to the bottom of what, what, well, I'm going to stick to rights and responsibilities of planning board related to the phase eight. That is already approved for twenty-one thousand and one twenty.
So not, I'm not sure, Kate, if I understand your comment related to, we were told that we can, but now we're not. I don't, I don't know what that means, but
So, so we were told there's conditions for the already approved phase eight that can and should apply to what's in front of us now. But it's so some things do and some don't, and maybe that's true. I just like to figure out the exactness of that.
I think Peter wanted to jump in on, on that.
I, I just wanted to summarize. Thank you, Kate, because this is a question I believe I've, 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 I've reached out to Lisa with an email. Is that I think Kate's trying to ask, back in two thousand and six, then back in two thousand and seven, this phase, and it's known as a couple of different phases, was previously approved by the planning board within a site plan process. On the signed Mylar's, right, that proposed development. There was a list of fifteen conditions, I believe, fifteen or eighteen conditions. Within a letter from GCG, they implicitly said that we should look back on that site plan that was, you know, it was signed and endorsed by the planning board in two thousand and seven. We should include any of those conditions in our new decision to make sure that everything is covered. And I think that is the element of what Kate is asking. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Um, that's a piece of it. So when they brought that up, I'm still trying to understand if we have any responsibilities besides those conditions for the the already approved hundred and twenty units, twenty-one thousand commercials, like that just disappears and that's okay that that disappears?
Right. So let's back up, right? So if you have, Kate, you bring up a good point. So maybe let's back up, right? There's a covenant that controls all of this property. And the covenant says, in order to develop the property, here are the big things that you need to do. Here are the use areas. Here are, here's the mitigation. Here's the maximum number of residential units that you're allowed to build. But then it says, because it contemplates that it's going to be done in phases, although it doesn't call it phases. And it says, here's the big picture. And so now you have to start getting down to the granular. And you applicant or property owner need to tell us, tell the planning board how you're going to develop these phases. And so it says that they have to submit a site development plan, right? That has to be approved by the planning board. And then based upon that site development plan, it gets divided into phases, right? It's not part of the covenant. It's part of the original pool of the overall site development plan. And then that gets divided into phases. Those are all at the, under the authority and jurisdiction of the planning board, just like any other permit. So now they've done what they've called phase eight with planning board approval. And they're saying, we want to amend what we got approved, just like you're allowed to do any other project, right? We want to change, they're actually filed a new, a new plan, a new site plan proposal. And that's okay, so long as the big picture meets the requirements of covenant, right? And the use plan matches and all of that. So you, the planning board, have the right to approve this new site plan within those bigger parameters which it needs. And if there are conditions that were on the prior site plan approval that are applicable to this proposal, you should apply it. You have every right, just like you have every right to condition a site plan approval, to move those conditions over. But there are some conditions that don't, they're not, they don't exist, they're not, they don't apply any, right? Either the, the, you know, the infrastructure was taken care of at some other time, or it doesn't apply because the proposal is different, right? On the other hand, there are some conditions that would apply. And I think that there's been a discussion back and forth between GCG and the applicant about which of those conditions would still apply and how they should be applied to this project. So the planning board, like any other site plan approval, has a right within the parameters of the zoning bylaw and those other things that control the site, in this instance, namely the covenant, to approve an amendment and or new site plan approval for this site. Is that helpful?
And, and Lisa, just so I, so I'm clear, it sounds like what you're saying, covenant is our kind of big picture we must follow. We don't have a choice on that. We're stuck with that. If there's something covenant related that we want to amend, we're going to need select board approval. We're going to need our approval with the select board to amend the covenant. And it has to be mutually agreed upon. It's a contract.
Yeah.
Roy, the applicant, would have to mutually agree with us. We'd have to say, hey, Roy, are you, are you in agreement? He, he would say yes. And the select board would have to kind of bless it. So if I'm understanding that correctly, the twenty thousand commercial is an area of gray interpretation because I do think that commercial is an area of gray interpretation, because I do think that that is a covenant item that we are asked, that applicant is proposing that we make a 10,000, not 20. And to me, it, it smells and behaves like a covenant amendment. Because that is a covenant interpretation from the zoning board of appeals that was never appealed. And that is the, the gray area I'm seeing here, that we absolutely need to be very clear that if we're going to take the 10,000 commercial, that is a mutually agreed upon negotiation that the planning board is doing with Roy. And the select board is going to have to bless it, right? Am I, am I understanding that correctly? And if, if not, can you tell me why the 20,000 square feet is not a covenant-related area that we're essentially negotiating?
Through the chair, could I comment on that, please?
Yeah, please do.
Okay, the covenant does not require 20,000 square feet.
No, it does not.
Is, the covenant doesn't require any amount of square feet.
No, correct.
The only reason that, that's in the covenant is if you want to go four stories with residential, you'll need to have a some amount of commercial in each building, whether it's 10 square feet or 10,000 square feet. We originally wanted to do 4,000 square feet, but knowing how strongly the board felt about 10,000, we acquiesced to that number, not because we had to vis a vis the covenant, because we wanted to work with the board.
The 20,000 just came from an initial site plan that Faford proposed. Just as they proposed a number of residential units, which there's no reason those numbers can't change with the new site plan application.
Right, so if I could also go back again, so the covenant, the question that was before the zoning board was that, and, you know, I don't have it in front of me, but as we start talking about this, this all comes back to me, right? The question before the zoning board is, when that commercial space had to be built versus getting additional residential building permits, okay? That was the question before the zoning board. And so there's a paragraph in the covenant that talks about no additional dwelling, multifamily units in excess of 50% shall be built until at least 50% of the non-residential or mixed-use development has been constructed. That was the question before the zoning board. And it was based upon the proposal of Faford at the time of how many, how many square feet of commercial space he was proposing versus when he could pull his next residential building permit. So the amount of square footage was a, a, um, a part of the proposed site plan approval and use plan. It is not a requirement of the covenant.
Wasn't the 20,000 square feet part of the negotiation of the covenant?
No.
So if the zoning board is referencing it, you're essentially saying the only reason they're making a reference to it is it happened to be something he was proposing within the site plan.
That's correct. They were, they were interpreting, when, when does the 50% apply? And when can he pull the rest of his multifamily residential building permits? How much of the commercial space do they have to build? Under their current, under their then proposal, right? Under their then proposal, how much of the, of the commercial space did they have to build before they could pull that second section of the, um, multifamily units? And the question was, what does this sentence mean? This was the question before the zoning board. No additional dwelling, multifamily units in excess of 50% shall be built until at least 50% of the non-residential or mixed-use development has been constructed.
Was that site plan where he was proposing 20,000 commercial, was that approved?
That was part of that site plan.
So, so this is kind of where I guess I, I remain confused. So essentially have a covenant, doesn't require 20,000 square feet, but he has a site plan where he's proposing it. And that's the reality on the ground. He builds, what is it, he built 10,000 square feet of commercial, right? That we're, we're, we're being asked right now to tear it down and rebuild.
Yep.
But his ultimate plan and the site plan required him to build another 10, right?
That site plan did, yes.
And that site plan was valid and it was approved within the town of Ashland.
And they have a right to amend it at any time.
Right, and so, so, so full circle, we today are being asked to amend a site plan that, I understand what you're saying. You're saying that is not a covenant requirement, that is a site plan requirement that we have a right to negotiate. We, the planning board, have a right to change without select board approval.
Well, I want to back up, to be clear. The property owner has a right to change it and ask you to approve that change, right? You don't have a right to quote, change it, because you don't own the land. The property owner and the applicant have a right to amend, modify and propose the use of the property, so long as it's within the parameters of the law, right? So, yes, the answer is, yes, you have a right to approve and or not an amendment to an existing site plan or change the entire plan at all, so long as it's consistent with the overarching uh, controls over the land, namely the bylaw and the covenant.
So in that case, go ahead, Roy, you wanted to ask a question.
I should mention, we're not amending a plan, we filed a new plan.
Which is, which is also allowed, Lisa.
So if we, if we deny the plan, we're not violating the covenant, right? If we deny the, the 10,000 square feet.
You deny it, you're not violating the covenant, no.
And if we allow it, it's our jurisdiction fully, the select board does not have to approve it. They don't have to prove that the 10,000 square feet piece, if we approve it.
It seems, is it, is it right, is it right, Lisa, to say that whole, that whole site plan with the 10,000 square feet and the proposed 20,000 square feet? At this point, it's like it never, never happened, because we have a new proposal in front of us. We have a new proposal and we have a covenant, and those are the two things we have to deal with.
Right, the bylaw, the covenant and the proposal.
And, and Lisa, if I may just ask, if denying the project based on us proposing only 10,000 square feet, if everything else is agreeable, is that, um, I mean, it's on violation of the covenant.
Clear, I don't think the member was suggesting that they had a right to deny the plan.
I was, I was, yeah, just to be clear, I was not suggesting that we should deny it over that one element. What I was suggesting is that if we, I was trying to figure out what we, what's in the covenant that we're tied to. If it's not from the covenant, that we can essentially do whatever we want with commercial space, that's what I'm trying to understand. So that whatever it is, whatever it is we do, whether we say it's not 10,000, it should be 50,000, it should be 500 square feet. Whatever it is we do, it's not going to violate the covenant, that's all I'm trying to understand.
Well, I would argue it would violate the covenant, because we're not obligated to do any specific amount. I thought we negotiated a number of 10,000.
I think she's saying, she's saying if we propose that, it wouldn't be a violation of covenant.
Right, so what, I, I, let's be clear, Roy and Todd. The member is talk, talking hypothetically to understand the relationship between the covenant, the existing site plan that's proposed in front of them and the one that has been approved and exists on the property. Nobody's suggesting, I don't believe and I don't want to misspeak, that in fact, the planning board can require you to do certain things or that could deny you do certain things unless it's within the parameters of the bylaw and the covenant.
Thank you.
All right, very complex issue. Are there any further questions for Lisa? I mean, does anyone need a further clarification on this?
I mean, it's not really a question, it's more of a, of a comment, I guess, where I think where I'm struggling with this is, is a, you know, I, I think, obviously, we're not dealing with a Faford company. We're dealing with, with a new applicant who's stepping into Faford shoes. And to me, I keep thinking, okay, Faford had this plan, he built 10,000 square feet, he was supposed to build another 10, he just didn't do it. And if he was here today, we would be having a different discussion. We would be asking him, hey, why didn't you do what you promised? So I, I'm, I'm struggling with this idea that, oh, it just never happened. We're just kind of starting from scratch, because he's not here anymore. That makes me uncomfortable, because I do believe he has an obligation to the people of Ashland, and he had an agreement and arrangement with us. There was an approved site plan and he didn't do what he was supposed to do. He literally just ignored it. And now we have this, this new applicant that we're trying to respectfully work with, who's stepping into those shoes. And, and it's just kind of saying, well, that just didn't happen. And, and that makes me uncomfortable, because I think if Faford was here, it would very much be real. And we would very much be asking, why didn't you meet your obligations to the people of Ashland, so?
So, can I, can I, uh, can I just offer a, a, a further explanation? So I, I don't think, um, so let's, let's step away from this property. Let's say I'm at, um, let's say I'm at 51 Ponce. And I come in and I get an application to build, um, 35 units in, you know, four buildings, right? And, um, I, I build one of those buildings. And then I, I decided I can't do that anymore, I don't want to do it anymore. I have a right to sell the property. And the new owner has a right to come into this board and modify that plan. I could actually get five permits on a piece of property and decide to choose to do one of them. So, um, I don't think it's a, um, and, and you didn't use these words, but I'm going to use them. It's not, I don't think it's a bait and switch. I think every property owner has a right to give the permits and then decide to change them. Certainly it's within the parameter of any permit granting authority to decide whether or not to allow those modifications or new applications.
Sure, yeah, and, and I, and I agree with that, and, and to add to it, I think that's the beauty of capitalism, right? So the, the value of your property will actually be impacted by the agreements that you've agreed upon. So if Faford agreed on 20,000 square feet, and he's trying to sell it and try to make it more valuable, his, his, um, company selling it and trying to say, well, you can actually do 10. Um, he has every right to do that, we have every right to say, well, actually, it's 20. Um, so you, I understand that, that you, you might be disagreeing with me, Lisa, but I, I think that's more of a policy question, not really a legal one.
Yeah, no, I wasn't, I'm not, it's not, I was not certainly trying to make the policy, I was trying to make the, make the point that from a legal perspective, the controlling documents on a piece of property are the bylaw and in this instance, a covenant. And those can't be modified except for by very, um, arduous, um, methods. And then the other controlling document is whatever permits exist. And if a person wants to change those permits, they have to go back to the board which issued them and ask either for modification or new permits. That's a policy question. But those permits control, as do the other two layers of the legal constraints.
So, so if there's no requirement of the zoning or the covenant to provide 20,000 square feet, there's no real mechanism for the board to force 20,000 square feet to be built unless it's required by one of those two, correct, or correct?
Well, and, except for that you have an existing permit on the site.
A site plan approval, yes.
And that's currently controlling the site.
Yeah, but we're not going to be building under that site plan.
Well, I understand that, that that's, but that's what's currently controlling the site. And so the board has a right not to grant you a new permit if you don't meet the requirements of the bylaw and the covenant.
Okay, but if we reach, if we meet those, do they have the right to deny?
If they believe that you don't meet the requirements of the bylaw or the covenant, they have a right to deny, under their criteria.
But if, if, if town council believes we meet the requirements, do they still have a right to deny us?
It's not my, it's not my decision. The bylaw makes the permit granting authority the planning board, not town council. The planning board is the one that decides whether or not you meet the criteria in the bylaw to grant site plan approval and or special permit or whatever it is, the permit you've sought.
So if we feel we meet them all, but we get denied, it would require litigation, correct?
Well, I, I mean, I, look, I'm not going to speculate on that or not. The planning board has a set of criteria to apply. You have gone through a process to determine whether or not you meet that criteria. They need to debate that, whether or not you meet the criteria.
I, I think.
If I, if I could, I think it's very clear to me that we have every right as a planning board to take a brand new permit request and consider it on its, on its footing. If we, we also as a planning board could have very strong positions to stick to certain elements of the site plan that has been approved for this site. So, um, we can do both.
Just make sure we separate those into legal obligations and to, and personal preference. I think those are, to make sure those two distinctions in what you're saying, there's a legal part of this and a personal preference that you as an individual member of the board may have or have not.
Yeah, i- i- if I may, I'm, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, so this is all, they're half Chinese to me, but I'm trying to follow. Um, it seems to me that the, 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 the question at hand, Lisa, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is, is, is simpler rather than complex. The way I understand what you explained and the discussion, the, 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 the items that Anna brought up is that we, we're dealing with, with, with a new site plan. And I, I, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with trying to relate this site plan with the other site plan. I think what, what clarified to me the issue is that that was a site plan that was proposed, whatever, had 20,000, but also had, I don't know how many residential units. I've, I've seen 200 as allowable. It didn't happen, so I, 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 am I right to, to, to think that we, I, I don't know, why are, why would we be tied to rethinking that site plan? To me, that's in the past. If this site plan, that's what's being discussed, is the matter at hand. And if this site plan accomplishes what the covenants and, and, and the bylaws require, that is the bubble we stay within to, 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 to set up, to, to, to debate if the criteria for decision apply. Am I right or not?
That, that's correct, Marcelo, is that the application in front of you is the application that you are to consider. You may have all kinds of different opinions about that.
Sure.
That's the application that you are to consider, whether you would prefer to have a different application or not, that may be the case. But the application in front of you is the application you are to consider, under the criteria of the bylaw and the covenant.
Okay, so, so it seems to me that, that the confusing part is trying to, to merge it with other things in the past.
Correct.
Because we, I mean, it's, it's, it's fine, we can desire that, but that's not what the application says.
Right, you have a new application, change the site, that's correct.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
We, but we also have the right to use the current site plan that's applicable to the site if we so choose.
Yeah, and, and, and I believe that's what the process has been. I mean, uh, the, the, the modifications that we've had over the, over the, the months is that.
I, I want to, I want to be really clear, right? There is current controlling documents on the site, the covenant, the bylaw and the existing site plan. That's the current controlling documents. You have been presented a new site plan with new uses. That is what you're considering. That, that's what you're considering.
Yep, I get it, thank you.
If I could through the chair, I'm a little confused, because I know maybe six months or more ago, we increased our amount of commercial from 4,000 to 10,000 square feet, because Anna specifically and others wanted it to be more. And frankly, I thought the whole board was quite happy with that, and I thought we were in a good place with that. And I'm a little surprised to hear otherwise.
As far as, as far as I am aware, and this is, as, as far as I am aware, this is just to try to understand, before the planning board really gets down the road of, of looking at something for approval or not approval, that we're going to put our names on, we have to make sure that we are following absolutely the correct document, that this one counts, this one doesn't. And that we're not missing something in the process, which has happened in the past on projects in town. And I don't think any of the six of us, eight if we include Peter and Emma, want to be involved in that kind of situation. We want to get right the first time. I think that's more of this apart, what this is about, and that's why we're asking these tough questions, because we want to get it right. I don't think anyone is um, picking us back to square one, I don't think that's the point here. So it isn't, I'm sure it's a little alarming, but that's, I don't think that's what this conversation is.
Just, just so we're clear, my questions to Lisa are because she's here. And it's very helpful to understand the context, because the covenant, we as a planning board have no right to just mess with, right? So it's very helpful to understand from Lisa, hey, where does this 20,000 thing come from? Where does it live? Does it live in the covenant level? In which case we need select board approval for any change, does it live somewhere else? So Lisa's clarifying, it lives on the site plan level. If it's at the site plan level, we have full jurisdiction, Roy, to consider your application and to figure out what we want right now and how we're going to interpret. And how we're going to interpret that and how we're going to look at the prior site plan, the new site plan, what we're going to do. So that's all this discussion was. We're not, we're not debating right now about commercial space. We're having a debate. Not a debate, we're having clarification with Lisa about where is our jurisdiction and so that we can truly make a proper decision that's clean. And that we do it consistent with select board jurisdiction, because there are certain things we cannot do. We are going to need the select board to do. Such as editing or changing the covenant. So I I thought this was really helpful. I I was not trying in any way to have a substance substance dis- discussion about commercial space. This was a, an understanding of our policy, legal position, et cetera, from Lisa.
Right, so um is everyone mostly clear at this time? Can we release Lisa to the rest of her evening?
All right, I don't have any further questions.
Lisa, run away while you can.
I have, right, great, everybody, good to see you all.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
But, yeah, I'm I'm with Marcelo. I am not an attorney. And um it does take some repeating for me to get it stuck in my head, so it wa- it was very useful. Okay, so that said, we've had the presentation, we've had the information from Lisa. And there's this now, this gap between the presentation and um. And what we're talking about with legal issues. But let me open it up to the board. Are there any questions? Um what are, what are the things we need before we move on to this project? That's my question to the board. Moving on to this project means looking at the criteria that we are obligated to look at within the bylaws, as Lisa had referred to. Um any information that we still want? What uh? What things are we still looking for that we as a board think are still missing?
I mean, I I started making a list of kind of, you know, areas to kind of wrap up and confirm, if you will. I know that last time I thought it was very helpful that we went through the GCG requirements. And I think we kind of left some un-unresolved little items, including some discussions of the punch list. And Peter sent the planning board the punch list, so I feel like we should make some time to kind of connect those dots and make sure we're good. With the punch list and the prior, if I recall, we went through like the prior requirements as well to see what applies to one and the other. Um I also feel like the traffic report from August one, it sounds like mostly has been responded to. But I feel like it would be beneficial for the board to look through that and make sure that we've covered all the. There were a couple of items in the traffic report that were recommendations.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I, we actually had a response letter, I could bring it up and show you, because there was only a few items, if you would like to see them, I'm happy to show that.
Totally, we can do that. I don't know, Trish, if you want to go through the whole list and from the board first, or do you, how do you want to do this?
Well, let me see what else there is from the board, so we can kind of get a sense of uh our, what we can cover this evening, right? So, so Anna, a check of yours, you had.
So I had, I had, I think the GCG report, there were a couple of kind of footnotes relating to the punch list, maybe? That might be confusing issues.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to know the punch list.
Was about.
Was about the entire project.
Gotcha, so the punch list was the pro- exactly, I think the CG.
Yes.
They were kind of interconnected, because we were reading one document and then we flipped to the requirements, and then we started talking about the punch list. So I think we kind of need to come back to that, make sure we have everything we need.
So you're talking about some of the GCG comments that referred to the traffic report in particular.
Uh and to the, I thought there was also a reference to the list of requirements that we started going through, but maybe I'm wrong.
The ones that are, the ones that were on the list of conditions of the old site.
Exactly, I think they referred to the old site plan.
Yeah, we have those as well.
Excellent, yeah.
And I think, then tell me if I'm wrong, Roy, but I think at the last meeting, did, you already reviewed those conditions? And said that you were okay with those conditions. Is that, am I making that up?
Uh Todd can pull them up and we can go over them.
We we're okay with the vast majority, and then there's a few that were no longer relevant or um. Just uh had been taken care of previously by uh Faford uh Company. Um I can, I I I we, we did a write-up and sent that, and I can pull it up that that as well, if you'd like to take a quick look at that.
When you get ready to have those two things, the traffic report and those conditions, from the rest of the board.
I had a couple, I had a couple more, Trish.
Okay, okay, sorry, go ahead.
On the parking, I think there was a letter from town council that we got, where she made a recommendation as to how we would handle the parking. There was specific language that she was suggesting that we need to consider for any decision. I think we need to peek at that and understand it. Because it was kind of like futuristic, like how parking would be addressed in the future. Specific concerns and recommendations.
Okay, that that might be something for the planning board to look at versus things that we're getting answers from.
Yeah, it might be related to the traffic report, though, so.
I I I will say, one of the things we do at a lot of our residential projects that help keep traffic in in or parking, i- we have everyone who's a resident. Have a sticker on their car, and we only permit uh. Cars with stickers to park on the property, and then they can print out guest passes. And I I think there was a mention by Lisa that if their parking is, we're not having enough parking. That we then go ahead and limit the number of residential passes we allow to park there. And then, of course, allow, so then there's open space for the commercial uses. We're fine with that, saying if it becomes an issue, then meet with the planning board and and look at reducing the number of permit. Uh parking for residents allowed on the site with stickers. We've done that and it's worked well before.
So what was, do you have one remaining issue, I think you said, Anna?
Uh the designer review, there was some kind of mention earlier by the applicant of some sort of response to design review and and a recent. Document they would have for us about the the trees or the the changes made. I think they were saying that that's something we may want to review, and then.
I'm sorry, we we did, we did submit a new plan with more native plant material.
So I think we need, as a planning board, to look at that and make sure that we're happy with how, what design, what did design review ask the applicant to do? And that we, the planning board, has kind of understood, you know, we're, we are in agreement with whatever that is. Um and then I also noted some of the. The elements that we've kind of been discussing about the solar, the the electric vehicles, kind of the green elements of this. And the reason I bring that up is, as as you might know, there was recent work done with the sustainability in the town of Ashland and the town vote on. Net zero, and I do think we as a board need to talk about that with this project. Um so those were some of my notes as to areas I'd like to cover at some point.
Okay. Anyone else on the board have think, have outstanding issues, not that this is the only opportunity. But I want to get them on paper while I can, so that we can start to get the questions answered by the applicant. And see if there's anything else out there that we need to address.
Um I have a couple, I I sent in, um so section eight dot six dot sixteen, there's like twelve things. I think some of them, we definitely do have information and some we don't, so maybe. They should take a look at that, or I.
I have that, I have that open right now, Kate, can you tell me specifically what you're looking at as?
Um for, so distinguish units by number of bed rooms, form of tenure and subsidies, anticipated rent or sales prices. Including any commitments for price ceilings, method is large planned sewer disposal. So some of that, I mean, you gotta read through that whole.
Number, what number was?
It's number four. I mean, to be honest, I didn't scrub and say everything is or isn't. I saw that and I have not seen some of that. So I said, just look at that section. Um I also sent in, I believe it's under, I believe it's under site plan. But it doesn't matter to be, I think, due diligence for planning about the adequacy of water and sewer. I know that applicant did a good job of providing like the pressure and they're comfortable with that and. And we're convincing that they would do no less, because that would make sense as an owner. But um I think that it has to do overall water supply about our permit. And how that's calculated, I sent in, I think that's more for the town side. Um and then related to that as well as sewer, that what's the sewer capacity, so we can calculate how that impacts. Um what we're allowed to send through Birmingham and how much that's going to kick up the prices. I know when you get over certain gallons, it kicks up the price per gallon, so we should, we should understand what might happen because of this project. To the sewer rates potentially. And I think that may be partly a town thing to calculate, but we probably need the gallonage from the applicant.
So do you um, do you guys have that uh that kind of information that you figured out, like uh stress on town services?
Well, we did, I think it was almost a year ago, talked to DPW in the water department. And there was sufficient sewer and sufficient water capacity.
Can you um? Peter, do you have that documentation?
You know, I'm sure I can dig it, I I'm sure I can look for it and 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 I can supply that, obviously, Dan and uh. Tim Mahler and Doug Small, you know, great for workers, and I'm happy to reach out to great, I'll choose our um water consultant. But I do know, I believe the Village of America is already counting in towards the reach capacity for the town of Ashland. And that was done back um back when the Village of America was 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 being proposed. But I'm happy to confirm that.
So this would be more units, though, than that, again, where the phase eight have less units, now it's more. So I, maybe they did overestimate the number of units or something, but we should at least, I think, know that.
I can, I'm happy to work with the applicant to get to the bottom of this with our council.
And then um the stormwater.
I think, I think it's a, one minute, Kate, I I think, I think this is um a question, Peter, of basically that impact study. You know, how does, how does water sewer that we were talking about in another meeting, how do, how do these things um eventually impact the town? And kind of the, how do, how do we run the numbers to to make sure that we're not taking it hit that way? Is that fair, Kate?
Um yeah, I also think at least on Con Street, it's a requirement of of that, I have to reread the site plan. But it's specifically requirement there, so I, I think it's applicable here anyway, so two reasons, yes. Do we, what is the impact and is there actually, are we following the um? I appreciate that you're being very careful to go through the criteria, because we are asked to sign our names, so we want to be confident. If we approve it, that we're meeting everything. So along that lines, a stormwater. I believe this has to go for a stormwater permit and kind of wanted to know when and how that works. So if it goes for stormwater and the applicant sent a bunch of work with GCG, that's maybe mostly wrapped up. But they come up with something else, does that come back to us to go to third party? And then related to that is, um I know there's, there's the stormwater to be cleaned out, that the applicant keeps saying is Faford. But we don't control Faford, so we, I mean, this, this is kind of that conundrum, like that stuff doesn't go away for us to approve something. If it's, if the stormwater is not going to work until Faford does something.
I was, I do, and and I just, sorry, excuse me, Roy, and 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 please just um bear with me. Um this past week, there was a meeting, and actually, Mr. Roy and McDowell Company has been talks with the Faford, you know. And how to complete that two thousand and five, uh two thousand and fifteen punch, that's obviously the biggest element. Um that is 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 length between these projects is to clean out of the basin. And so um I was working with the Faford Company and our DPW. Uh in our third-party review GCG to actually meet on site. That meeting, I believe, took place at this past Wednesday. I was not able to attend, obviously, because I'm in, out of the office with my circumstances. Um and and so with that said, uh the ball is rolling, uh and 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 things are moving. Um I don't want to say behind the scenes, but with all the parties involved, the Faford Company, the McDowell um family, based on development. And the town of Ashland, because everybody wants to make sure that that punch list is complete. Um nobody more than based on development, who's making a very large investment into this development, into the town of Ashland. So um that, that, that meeting, there was a fairly large meeting between all parties through GCG, with GCG involved. Um regarding the clean out and the proper maintenance of that detention. So before that goes any further, I just kind of wanted to add that information for everyone's um, hopefully answering those questions.
So through the chair, if I could add to that, I uh I've spoken to the uh. People at Faford myself, and they assured me they're working with Peter and the town to clean out the detention area. Also, I had discussions with Faford that it needs to be, money's put probably in escrow for the uh. Finished paving on Queen Isabella and the finished paving on Chestnut. Because Queen Isabella, I'll take a guess roughly six hundred feet in, is only a binder horse. And that's the same thing pretty much on Chestnut Street. So those things ideally should not be done before we tap in our water sewer and various other connections. It'd be kind of silly to pave it and then us cut it up. So if the money could be held in a sort of an escrow account, let us get the utilities put in, and once that's done. That finished paving on Chestnut in um Queen Isabella could be completed.
And what about future cleanings of the um, of the filtration area?
That's actually a responsibility of the O and M plant of the entire development of the project, and we'd be part of that.
Yeah, we'd certainly make sure that gets done, because obviously, we want it done, and I think um. When we're operating in part of the Homer Association, we'll make sure sure it's done, because it needs to be done on an annual basis.
Okay, and so Peter, um Concom, does this, is this project going to?
It does have to go to Concom for a stormwater permit. I do not believe the applicant has applied for that yet. However, I'm sure they're in the works uh in in doing that. I do want to say, all information that GCG produces um with the review from the planning board. Uh is shared like every other project um with conservation to 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 make sure that. We're not adding a another engineering company that we're obviously, you know, using um. We're 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 using all pieces of information.
We're not repeating the effort.
Correct.
Okay.
The chair, could we have um Matt Leidner speak to the issue of stormwater and and those issues with a stormwater permit?
Um if you keep it just about what the process is and not, we're not going into design questions right now. Okay, that's fine.
Matt?
Um so, yeah, so basically, we we have a full, uh you know, a full design. Um that is, you know, should it be approved, it's construction ready, it's, the design is there, the details are there. Um and so when the project moves forward uh to Concom for the stormwater permit, it will just be that same. Design and and report and calculations that GCG has already uh approved, so.
Okay.
I I don't know, Roy, is there anything else specifically you wanted me to say?
No, I think that's it. Okay, I I think the fact that Matt, you're saying everything that we're going to be giving to Concom has already been approved by the consultants, that they're going to be using.
Okay, so you are, you have that and you're ready to go with Concom, basically?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Kate, was that everything on your list?
Yeah, I think the only other thing is when you scrub through the bylaws, there's like. Uh I think some of it, maybe Roy talked about like the streets and sidewalks, and I, I'm not. Um prepared to talk about specific ones, but maybe just make sure that's covered in their site plan.
The sidewalks along their property, the property.
It talks about connections to others down on Chestnut, et cetera, so.
We added, we added that to the most recent plan we submitted today.
Was that going to cemetery, is that the?
No, this is the connection with the sidewalk, because right now the sidewalk on Queen Isabella does not connect to the sidewalk on Chestnut. There's like a fifteen, twenty foot gap, so we're gonna, we're gonna connect that and then put a handicap ramp that goes down to the um Queen Isabella.
Okay, yep. All right, so um. That was Anna, Kate. Anyone else? Um Marcelo, Deepa, Kevin, have anything to add to that list? Okay. Well, feel free to jump in if you do. What, why don't we try to get some of the um, obviously, the stormwater seems like it's, it's, it's ready to go. Um Peter's going to get some information on the water sewer from DPW, revisit the things that were submitted perhaps a year ago. But which information we need and analysis we need. Um so that's, that is on, in Peter's court for now, so we understand how that works. Um let's go back up then and look at some of the things, maybe we can knock off the list tonight, we're not going to be able to do all of it. But to um to get a little further and and just making our way through these. These remaining questions. So I think the first thing was um GCG, there was a letter about traffic, a traffic report, is that?
Sure, I can, it it's actually Ron Mueller's a traffic consultant. And this uh is our response to to the uh traffic consultant. Um they asked us just to confirm the number of spaces, because there was a described. there was a discrepancy on one plan. It said 360 and the others it said 357. So we cleaned up that, uh, that on the plans and it's 357.
So your 90 additional parking spaces reflect the two fif- the 357 number?
Yeah, the 357 is the total number of parking spaces. 313 are in the surface parking and 44 are the garage spaces in the building. And that is based on all the, the analysis that we've submitted, um, based on the ITE parking demand for both the commercial and the residential, uh, that shows a potential excess that we're providing of 90 extra spots and will ever really need.
Okay.
Can I just ask a, can I ask a quick question?
Yep, go ahead.
Is there, you know, we have not discussed this as a board, so I, I'm just kind of exploring this. Is the applicant feeling very strongly about those 90 parking spaces? If the board has, if the board, I guess what I'm asking is, are those 90 necessary?
Anna, if I can answer that, um, I'm a big, this is Roy speaking. I'm a big believer in having too much parking, not way too much. Um, if you're telling me you wanted to lop off 20, I'd be fine with that. Um, I always feel comfortable. I'd rather have more than enough than, than too little. So do I think we're overparked? I don't think we're overparked by 90. I think that's a little bit much. You know, if you want to, I, I'd like to leave the plan the way it is because I think it allows to have more than sufficient. You might have a peak period. You might have a special party, who knows what. To have enough parking, I think is always a good thing. And if we really had really that much excess parking, it just gives you more snow storage. So I think leaving it the way it is, but I'm very confident we don't need all of it.
And, you know, we can come back to this, I think, when we discuss some of the, the green elements, if you will, and the net zero stuff, but I, I do wonder about that element of it. And, and I, I don't want to take up too much space now, but I feel like we as a board need to talk about that and figure out what those 90 extra spaces really are about and what we can do with it that maybe gives flexibility to bring them back in the future and we can utilize that space in some other ways.
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't call it 90 though. I think that's too much.
Yeah, I, I, I think we'll look at if, I think there, if there are situations where we feel that up something else, a more green, an additional tree would be better than, you know, to bring us down to 88 spaces or 85 spaces or whatever it is. We're going to look at that flexibility, but, um, but not a discussion for today. Is that what you're asking, Anna? That?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I know there's a lot of kids in that building.
We'll take a look at that.
Might be, you know, and so I'm just kind of exploring. We've got, we're going to have this kind of empty space that, that's not always full. What can we do with that? Space that might, that might have flexibility for future parking, but be utilized in a more green, community oriented manner. I, I'm not, I don't have an opinion. I just wanted to explore where Roy was at it. And what I'm hearing is, hey, a few spaces you, you, you can see kind of not needing, but you're not really ready to give up all 90. And we can talk more about that later.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I, i- i- just to be clear, it's not 90 more than zoning requires. It's, it's less than zoning requires. That's why we're asking for the special permit. But it is just based on demand. The, the, the two spots per unit is pretty, um, uh, a, a very high standard that almost no apartment complex ever needs.
So you're, and, and you're asking, hold on, hold on. You're asking, you, you're asking for a waiver for reduced parking for what you actually need. So we need to be careful of that line about how further, how much further we take you away from, um, from meeting the required parking.
Very good. Yes.
Okay.
I agree with you, Shaw. Th- th- well said. That, that's something that would concern me.
Okay, the next comment was just, they asked because we changed one of the driveways from a two lane exit to a one at one, uh, lane exit. And they just asked us to update these charts to reflect that. They didn't really have any other comments other than the chart needed to be updated. Um, I'll let your traffic engineer confirm this, but just it's a lot of data. Um, the next one, they asked us to include the, uh, site lines on the plan, which I think Matt Leidner mentioned that we're, we put on the sight lines. Um, I think this graphic that comes up, sorry, it's, uh, as you can see, and it shows the, the site distance lines that we meet all the requirements. Um, the, we provided this previously to GCG, but, uh, Ron Mueller hadn't received it. So we, we supplied that to him. Uh, so I gotta zoom back in now because it zoomed me out. It doesn't want to let me, um, let's see, why is it not letting me zoom in? Apologize. Maybe get that off my page.
Do you want to close and reopen it?
Um, I don't know why.
Use the plus button that I just highlighted.
Yeah, uh, this button right here?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, it's below, you're right. It's below my, uh, share screen thing. Sorry, I didn't see it. Um, so that was the response to the, uh, sight lines. Then, uh, I guess the next comment was making sure that there's no planting material within those sight lines higher than two feet, which we, uh, which there is not. And we've also put a note on the plans to make sure that that is consistent with what's, uh, goes forward in the future. Um, and then the next comment, let's see. They, uh, asked them to look at the speed, the line of sight based on the speed, which is in, included, which is what they did. Um, then it talks about the pavement, which is the, we, we just discussed putting the, the top coat on Queen Isabelle and Chestnut. Uh, they mentioned that that needs to be done or milled and done. So that's, um, something that I think Peter is on discussions of the punch list with Faford Company. Uh, then they act, uh, mentioned to put a stop line in, uh, over by the kind of a, the commercial loading zone towards the right, uh, which we added that stop line that was missing. And then we deleted on next comment that kind of crosswalk to nowhere that Matt mentioned. When we moved the crosswalk from the right side of the entry to that new, uh, crosswalk that connects to the commercial area. So we eliminated those, uh, kind of old lines that were still on there. Then they asked for the, uh, vehicle movement for the Ashland fire, uh, for the largest fire truck, which I'll scroll down, you'll see. Uh, and that is really those, that item in 12, I think we discussed was connecting the two sidewalks that aren't connected. Um, at Queen Isabella and sorry, I skipped comment 12, which I think we've discussed where they, he, they mentioned a sidewalk at the rear of the site, connecting the site to Queen Isabella, which the neighbors have kind of pushed back on having. They, they prefer the, um, multifamily, uh, residents don't walk out that way towards their, their homes. So we haven't included it at, to this point. Uh, this is just the auto turn analysis. I sent this to the fire department, uh, just to get their confirmation. This is similar to what we sent them a year ago, but I figured I'll get an updated, uh, approval from them to, to send to the board, just so you all can, can see that. So this has been sent to the fire department. Um, and I think that, I mean, the rest is, I scroll down, I think the rest is backup data. Sorry, it's taking so slow here.
Thirty seven more pages.
No, oh yeah, these are all the attachments of the calculations. So that was all the comments. And these are all just traffic calculations, which obviously nobody wants to see. Um, the peer review letter, which we submitted, uh, I think a, a little over a week ago. Uh, hopefully, um, this kind of goes through a lot of these with the civil engineer questions, I think Matt Leidner addressed. We, we talked about a lot of these in our previous meeting. And then this was our kind of written responses to those. Um, this one's regarding the clean out of the basin, which we discussed at Faford's, uh, currently working on that. They've already gotten one bid on it. They're waiting on a second bid to clean that out. Um, GCG saying we resolved these. Uh, this is regarding the lot, uh, area. We were, um, we asked Lisa to me, did she confirm that really when we did the A and R? Um, the, and GCG just wasn't aware of that. So I think Lisa has confirmed that. Uh, and in eight point six, uh, number three, that's fine. We, we, we're proposing this anyways. If it wants to be a condition that we meet this, that's an appropriate place to make it a condition of the approval. Um, probably, but, um, this is just regarding the number of parking and, uh, saying that we believe we provided a plenty, uh, of parking. And they, this is where GCG mentions a potential, uh, opening of adjusting it in the future. Uh, if there's a bigger parking demand than we expect, we really don't see that's the case, but we do worry when we're dealing with lenders, they're saying, well, what happens if you have to add 50 parking spots? We prefer it to be, um, if park becomes a problem, you'll limit the number of parking spots you'll let, you know, residents use. And that'll be done by a parking system, a parking sticker system that we've used in other areas versus saying we're going to have to, I don't know, do something. The, um, other comments regarding the hours for commercial, we were fine with. Um, this, the access site, I think GCG kind of concurs that the rear access per- is perpendicular coming off of Queen Isabella and it's an access entryway. Um, I think we talked about that last meeting as well. Um, again, this is a sidewalk at the rear of the site. The GCG mentioned that Ron Mueller also mentioned, and we mentioned other neighbors would prefer not to see that. This is, uh, regarding the pavement markings, which, uh, Peter just addressed at Faford's looking through that punch list for all that, those items. Uh, this one, uh, let's see, the, uh, this is a list of conditions for the previous site plan approval of 2007. Um, although, although we, we believe that, you know, those are just conditions on a previous site plan and the board can pose whatever new conditions they want on the current. If the ones that are applicable were, were fine, leaving them, some aren't applicable anymore, but, um, we're fine with that. Let's see, the drainage items. We have agreed that we're willing to put a condition that upon, prior to construction, we'll do a confirmatory test. I think Matt Leidner spoke to that previously, and that would just be a condition on the, uh, on the decision. Uh, this is what Matt had mentioned, removing that pipe drain for the, uh, trash building and making it have an open flow, uh, per their request. That's been amended, the plans. And this is the, uh, Coughlin Environmental. We supplied that report showing the water pressure supply is enough that it currently exists in this, in the, uh, street. Um, we've amended the plans to make that clearance for the drainage and, uh, lines that I think Matt had mentioned earlier, uh, talking. The, then this is also what, uh, the contouring, the bottom of the, uh, of the manhole. So they, they would flow better. We, we made that address, uh, we addressed those, the plans to do that. Again, this is the comment about the kind of, um, loading area, which I think we discussed earlier tonight. Uh, and I think GCG, uh, kind of wrote a new letter that they're okay with that, if the board is. Um, again, this is just more landscape comments that we meet the, the, the number and everything and the board should make sure they're good with it. Um, this is regarding the photometrics, which is, we supplied with the new 15 foot heights. Uh, again, this is photometrics. And we addressed, uh, this is again, the conditions of approval of 2007 for the traffic, which we've discussed and submitted information on. Um, this is regarding the condition for the number of parking spaces, which I mentioned earlier, we'd rather uh, not leave it so broadly open because we worry about, uh, doing, uh, I, uh, when you're dealing with lenders, they don't like any kind of conditions for open items. Rather a restriction, as I mentioned, for number of parking stickers we give out. Um, again, this is mentioned to sidewalk at the rear of the site. If we want to, if the board wants us to take a look at that. And a lot of these were addressed already, these stormwater comments that I think Matt went over earlier today. And this is regarding the clean out of the basin, which we mentioned, the, um, the storm, the condo association has not been keeping up with the requirements of the, uh, operation maintenance plan for the whole development. And that needs to be done and we'll certainly make sure that basin gets cleaned out. And then going on a go for basis, we'll be at those meetings, making sure that continues. And that was it for, uh, no, that was it for this document. Um, again, this is the document we went through last week. I don't know if you want me to run through it again versus 16 or so conditions on the previous 2007 site plan.
Only, only new information.
Could I just, could I just, could I just ask the prior one that we just went through?
Yes.
Can we get a copy of that?
Uh, that was, that was submitted, uh, last Thursday as part of our whole.
Okay.
I, I can tell you his number on the submittal. It was number three on the, on the submittal from last, uh, last week.
And Peter, would we find it on the website or was that emailed to us? Do you know?
Uh, that was a drink, like, there was a direct link to all information that's up on the website. So if you go to relevant documents.
Awesome.
Based on development as an email, uh, introducing their application.
Just click on it. Okay.
Developments, I mean, all their items, uh, which I believe 18 of them were all attached numbered.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. I only want to go through new information on this week.
Okay, this, this is all the same as we went over last week, so I won't bother you with it then.
Especially, especially if, if, if you're agreeing to add, add as conditions, anything that is still applicable, obviously look at those in more detail. Um, as they get put into the new conditions. Um, so, um, I think there's a, we obviously have things from design review committee that we're going to need to go through as well. They had made some recommendations, some I think have already um, been integrated, others maybe haven't. And the design, and the planning board will need to go through those, um, one by one to see, um, how we, um, you know, want to integrate them. Um, we have information about, um, water and sewer that we, that has been requested that we want to get back. There may be some other things that we, some minor things that we want to know some more about, um, that we need to get back and that we'll have to, you know, filter, you know, filter through the week, I guess. Um, what I'm wanting to know at the ti- at the present time, as we move forward for the applicant, is that I would like to get a general sense from the committee. Um, not, not set in stone, but where you are, where you are sitting on this project, that there might be loose ends, but you generally support the project. That, um, that you feel that there's a lot to be worked out. I would like to know where board members are sitting at this time and at this point in, in the project. Marcelo, you want to begin?
Sure. Um, no, at, at, at this point, I, I, I think I'm comfortable with the project. I think, I mean, I've, I've, I've been involved in this project since January and that's kind of in the history. I've seen the, the progression of it. Um, I think as long as the pending items with, uh, with the list that, that needs to be addressed are addressed, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Deepa?
Um, I am too. Um, the team has really made a good effort every time to really listen to us and come back with improvements and kind of really, I mean, it's, I've been on this project for almost a year now, so it feels like it, there's definitely been a lot of communication that's gone back and forth and they've really made a sincere effort to really fulfill it. So I'm in full support of this project at this point.
Anna, where are you?
I think that we have made great progress. I think there are some areas we still need to kind of lay out as far as, um, you know, I, I've listed them all. I've, I've listed them off. I think for me, we're now in the, in the very important details that, that are going to make this, you know, truly excellent for Ashland. And we need to kind of get into the nitty gritty. So I, I'd like to start almost drafting, if you will, kind of where we are for, for these different areas. Um, and really make sure that, you know, there's so much information as to what the applicant is willing to do. There's so many different areas. I think we just need to start writing.
I.
Sure that we're there. Um, but big picture where I am with the project is I think that it's a very, it's, it's a great opportunity for Ashland to make sure that the Wildwood District is finally properly completed, that that particular project that started and was never finished is done. And I think it's an important, this is a key element of it because it's right in front of the, the whole district, if you will, the whole project. So I want to get it done just right and make sure that the applicant walks away from the table, if you will, satisfied that they got what they needed and that the people of Ashland get what, what the bylaw intended. So, um, I'm kind of ready to get into the details and I feel like we've been, we need to start writing.
Thank you. Kate?
Um, I, I do have a heartburn over the parking because I, I know you can say what you want about reducing parking, but the trade off may that our entire community supported that level of parking, which may support a smaller building, which may support more open space. And I think also, I, I, I know maybe people that have been on the board longer looking at this, but, I don't, that doesn't speak village to me, right? Village walkability of that, of that bylaw. So I definitely wanna kinda look at the details more. But that's kinda my initial thoughts about that.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, you wanna weigh in?
I think overall, we're in a good place for the, kinda with Anna, that there's some of the finer details about just, you know, anything further we can do about sustainability. I think we should maybe even talk to the town too about, if there's any funds that the town could spend to make an additional unit or two affordable, because every one of those will count in the long run. And we're only at ten percent here. And then, you know, other than that, like Anna said, it's just spreading and, you know, there may be a long list of conditions because of the complexity of, it's project's history and multiple owners going forward of maintenance, but, but yeah, overall, I, I think it seems to, look where the bylaw intended to.
If I could add, we forgot the affordability item. Can we add that to the list, you know, that we started of items to discuss? I, I, I do feel like, if, if you will, we're at the negotiation stage here, right? And, and I think we need to kinda, make sure that we've covered that for sure. So thank you, Kevin, for reminding me. I remember I thought of it last time and I just forgot to, to add it.
I would ask the applicant to take a look at that and see if there's any, to take a look at it. I'm just leaving at that, the, the affordable units. Um, and, and I think I'm, I'm sitting where the majority here is, that obviously that we have to cross the Ts, we have to dot the Is, but there's a million ideas still out there. We have to, get them, all the ducks in a row, so to speak. And I, I agree with Anna at this point, that I think it's, I think it's time, we have criteria that we need to review. It is, nothing is set in stone. I will not imply that. But I think we need to start getting what will be, I assume, a long list of conditions, a long list of, information in the document that we choose to either vote for or against, but I think it's time to start getting that document in place so that we know, what it is we're voting for or against. Peter, is that good with you and your copious spare time?
Yeah, my spare time, I'll get that done. Uh, no, I think we're there and, and I'm glad the board's having this discussion, because I think, it, it's, it's been a long time to make, you know, obviously we've had this, we've been looking at this project for over a year and I, I know we spent about six months looking at the A and R and the land area question, which obviously we brought over, so. I knew, I've known this time was coming and I know this, this, this document needs to be drafted, so, and, and I, I think it is the proper time.
All right.
And, and if I could add, just to kind of amend my comment, because it might help the applicant, I, I think for me, I would be, I like where we're going and I think for me, the affordability and the sustainability piece, the net zero and the affordability piece, if we could, see more movement on that area, on those areas, I think that would be, I would like to see the applicant initiate that, rather than having us push, if that makes any sense.
Oh, oh, we, we have done some progress on, on the sustainability. We, we've made the, the roof solar ready. We've made all the units electric for the, uh, electric heat pumps, which we, we the first time, we've, we the first time we've ever done that.
I think it's understood, we've actually gone through that stuff before and I, I can't do it now.
I know, I'm just saying, we've done a lot of things already, so I don't wanna come off like we haven't made any, any.
I don't think anyone, I don't think it leaves that. I would say, say, take a look at the affordability, see if we can sweeten the pot. And, and let's, and we'll start getting the ducks in a row to find an agreement that, that works for everybody. Um, as, as we're this far down the road, but, and at this time, I apologize to anyone, any residents that have come on for this project. But we were at, we were at ten to ten, your time, an hour earlier for me, thankfully. Um, and we still have one more public hearing, so I will not be taking public comment today. I do encourage anyone that has public comment to please send your public comments to the planning board. They do get read, they do get passed on to the entire planning board, and we do wanna hear from you. We just can't all, we just can't fit everything, in a meeting sometimes, so, so please send those forward. So on that note, I will thank the applicant and we will need to continue. Peter, not on the twenty-fifth, right? What, what are, what are you thinking?
Uh, just to, as, as, as we need, as, as obviously to get this document in order, I think it's gonna take a little bit of time, obviously the twenty-fifth. Um, I think we all know it, it's gonna be a very big agenda with the recent submittal of ten of Main Street. So Roy and Todd and, um, with your, obviously, I think, uh, time scheduling, I know you're under the time schedule with the, with the Pafford Company. But I would like to propose a continuance until September eighth, which is the first meeting in September. That would give me time to start to draft elements and to kinda check some items off the bucket list. Roy and Todd, do you have any input on that?
Is there a reason why you can't see us on the twenty-fifth?
So we're gonna open up a public meeting for ten to fifty Main Street, which filed a fairly large application, which is gonna be about two hundred units in the downtown. And this is gonna be the first meeting for them. And I just, I feel like it, it's, it's gonna be a large, uh, meeting. Uh, that meeting also is gonna include three ninety-nine Union Street, which is the location of the existing, excuse me, Walgreens, which is gonna be a proposed Starbucks. And so with those new two applications, starting on the, excuse me, twenty-fifth, I think it's gonna be a fairly large agenda with those items. And so I knew this was coming and this point was, this, this tedious conversation, needs to be had with the planning board, is that these large projects, such as your own, such as five oh one Pond Street, you know, stacking four large projects on the same meeting. Uh, when the meetings are already going to eleven o'clock, um, we're gonna have to stagger them or, or, or you shouldn't, you know, shift some stuff around. Uh, or often time limits.
Peter, if we do that, it would be very helpful if maybe, as you're working on a draft decision, we clean up some of these loose ends that the board is asking for. If you could share a draft decision, that we could at least get a little understanding of where you're headed with the board, that would be very helpful.
I'm, I'm open to that. Is that okay?
Oh, a hundred percent. I'm very open to that.
So I think that would be constructive times spent between now and the eighth.
Okay.
I agree.
No, I'm gonna try to get it working on this as soon as possible, uh, with all things considered. Uh, but if I could just get an agreement with that continuance to the eighth, I would greatly appreciate that.
We agree with that.
And then we'll put that on the, uh, we'll put that on the agenda on the eighth.
Thank you.
Send you an email.
And thank you to the board.
Could I clarify my sustainability point to just help the applicant?
One comment, Anna, we gotta move on.
Yeah, just to kinda get us moving towards a draft, if you will. There was a specific email that, I believe went out to the planning board from the sustainability, uh, member Matt Marquess, and I'll try to get it over to Peter, that outlined specific ideas, if you will, and I just wanna make sure they've been addressed. They've all been addressed.
I do believe that was forwarded at the time, cuz I think I asked Peter to do that, so, but double check.
Maybe Peter could just double check and, and I think it'd be really helpful, whatever Peter is gonna draft, that we address those points, one way or the other, or that we discuss them.
Okay. All right, on that note, I wanna thank the applicant and we will see you on September eighth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm just gonna wanna make a note before Anna disappears here for five oh one Pond Street, that I am mixing from the agenda, any other discussions and other topics this evening. I'm just not doing it, or you can continue without me. Except for perhaps going through the meeting minutes to see, make sure we take, stay on top of those and anything, that a board member deems urgent, we will address at this time. Otherwise, we're not gonna look at, planning topics, reports, or administrative manners and matters unless the objects, unless, the topics are important and urgent. Otherwise, they will be left for a later date. We will, however, talk, we will, however, redo, uh, go through the meeting minutes. We'll have Anna pop back on for them. Do the board members need a short break? Before we look at five oh one, or you just wanna keep going? Just wanna keep going? All right. I would.
So I'll come back for the minutes.
All right, come back from the minutes.
Peter will text me. Yep.
For, gosh, there was something else I was gonna say, but now it's gone. Um, so I have no idea what it was. Oh, I, I know. I was gonna say, since we're not taking a break, if any of the board members need to just go off screen, get a drink, say goodnight to your kids, whatever you need to do. Just feel free to do it and come back on. So with that, oh, Peter, you know, I needed to take a vote to continue that, didn't I? Uh, you're on mute.
Two and a half years, I never get told. Uh, yeah, we need to give votes to continue on the eighth.
All right, well luckily we still have plenty of people, so I am going to make a motion to continue one hundred Chestnut Street to, September eighth. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second and a roll call vote.
Deepa and Kadi.
Myself, I.
There's a guy.
Kevin, you're on.
Kevin McLean, I.
Andrew Kendall, I. So at least we still have five. Um, and now we will go on to five oh one Pond Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review. Peter, can you give me a brief intro about where we're at?
So this was last heard by the planning board, I believe, back in July. We did not have, uh, we did not open the public meeting last meeting, because obviously we had a pending situation. However, we are back here as a full board and we are, are ready to see the plans and the revised plans and the update from, um, Mr. Stevens, Representative Trust Development. Uh, I know Mr. Mark Kolblass is here tonight, uh, and he is the attorney representing this project and, or representing this project. Uh, and so that is the, uh, major item. There's a lot of information that came back. Um, and number one included a memo on Converse Way, and I know the planning board has been some talk on that. Uh, Mark, if you wanna go over that and review, uh, your, your, your thoughts and your view of Converse Way and the history of that, I think I would greatly appreciate that. And, and the board would greatly appreciate that. Uh, but most of all, I think, uh, I'm gonna hand it over to Matt and Ben, um, to go over the revised site plan, uh, and where things stand, uh, on this project. I know, some of the elements that were submitted were a rendering or a redrawing of the, front of the building and the wood structure, uh, I'm skipping my words here, so. Um, but with that, I think that's what I can, I can leave the.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Um, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I'll try to be, keep it succinct tonight. We don't need to start over again on some items. I'll give you a brief update. Since our last meeting, we had a couple of open items on design, if you will. And I think our, one of our biggest issues probably revolved around the parking space size, which was brought up, at the board level and also brought up at the third-party consultant. So prior to sending the plans back to the third-party consultant, we sort of did a re-shift, uh, on the site, and so now all the parking spaces on the site are nine by eighteen. We still have the same count, a hundred, a hundred and eighty-one spaces. We're required to have a hundred and eighty. Um, we have twenty-four aisles and all our spaces are nine by eighteen. Our woofer spaces were twenty feet. Now, the majority are twenty-two feet. Some are still twenty, but usually they're at a crosswalk, so they have more than twenty. That is the most substantial plan change since our last meeting with this board. Um, there's five items I'd like to talk quickly about tonight. Parking size is one of them. The need, or we feel the lack of need, the requirement for a loading area, which was mentioned by the third-party review. Um, there was, there's the issue, the legal issue, Will, of, of Converse Way. Our rights to Converse Way, our ownership of Converse Way and how that applies, which my attorney Mark Cavlak will discuss. And then there were two sort of open design issue. One was on the roof line, of the front elevation. And the other question involved the trellis design, trying to get a better handle on, the size and proportion of that. Those are the only, the five items, um, that I'm, going to speak to, but I'll be happy to bring up site plans and go into other things as it may, uh, as it may come up. Um, so quickly, I'll talk a little bit about parking. Uh, if you've read our memo and from MDM, um, we brought up.
Do you have the plan that you can put up, if you have a new plan of the, of the parking to, be good to have a visual in front of us?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, so it, this was brought up, I think, at the board level and also brought up, uh, by the third-party review. We did have six, eight and a half by sixteen-foot spaces and a twenty-two-foot aisle. Um, but now all the spaces are nine by eighteen. All, all the aisles are twenty-four feet wide. That space, nine by eighteen, does not meet your definition and your bylaw for parking space. There's no specific language in the Pond Street Overlay District, about parking space size, but you're, you have a singular definition of, of parking for the town of Ashland, as a nine by twenty space. There's no definition of compact space. We did some research and, and we had MDM look at this issue. They, they provided a memo, which I don't really need to go into, talking a little bit about, the functionality of a nine by eighteen and the effect in this, in this application and how commonly it might be used in similar applications. I think their memo speaks to that it's certainly more than adequate size, especially with a nine-foot width. Won't be a detriment to the project in any way and would be sort of commonplace in a typical newer bylaw that would be, sort of adjusting to everyone driving some smaller cars these days, and some towns have done that, some towns haven't. Um, we also looked at past projects and there are three or four recent projects in town, including the project right next door, where they were permitted with nine by eighteen spaces. Um, I know from a function standpoint, our Ashland Woods project had nine by eighteen. All our spaces were nine by eighteen and we never had an issue there. We actually had twenty-two foot aisles. Um, so instead of sixty feet in width, we had fifty-eight feet in width, but we never had any issues with that width. And in a practical matter, we looked at town hall, we looked at the high school and physically measured the spaces and most of the spaces are, are painted out at eighteen feet. Um, so we, that's our opinion, if you will, on the parking spaces. Uh, we don't, feel that it represents an issue being at eighteen feet deep, and that's our argument to the board and the memos we supplied to that. The second item brought up, not in our discussions with the planning board previously with your board, but, the consultant brought up that, um, the issue of a loading area. Uh, once again, this is not in your Pond Street Overlay District. This is in your definition, under your parking, requirements about loading areas and loading bays. A loading bay, I think implies a, overhead door and a tractor trailer. A loading area, in my reading, wasn't defined. Uh, a loading bay is defined, sixty feet, sixty-five feet long, because it's, it's planning on a tractor trailer. A loading area is not dimensioned out in your bylaw. In practicality, we don't really feel the need for a defined loading area. We have two smaller, commercial uses. They're gonna be service uses. They're not gonna be material uses. They're not gonna be, products coming and going. They're not gonna be retail sales where trucks would show up. Um, we do see them as professionals, dentists, doctors, uh, physical therapy. So their deliveries would generally speaking be in very small trucks. They would be during the day when the parking lot is generally quieter. Um, we are gonna have full-time property managers, so our tenants, when they're moving, if they have a delivery of the moving truck, they'll be notifying the, um, the management company who will, have certain areas that they cone off, uh, in anticipation of a moving truck or, or a delivery truck of some sort. If, if the planning board feels we should have an area. Um, i- if the planning board feels we should have an area, um, the most practical area unfortunately would be right in front of the um, planned left-side dentist space in the Warner uh, which we don't think would look very good. We do have some landscaping in that little um, drop-off area. So we could push that back and create maybe a six to eight feet deep by twenty-foot-deep loading area. Um, rather not, obviously for aesthetics, but if if we feel, if the board feels strongly um, that it's something we should do, then we can explore that at that location.
Do you have, have you provided those, any kind of loading area at your other properties? And if, how have you managed people moving in and out in your, um, what is it?
Ashland Woods.
Ashland Woods, yep.
Uh, no, there's no loading areas there. It's a similar, they, they notified the management company. Um, I mean, there's a small unit, so it's not like a tractor-trailer moving company showing up. I mean, these are eight hundred and fifty to eleven hundred square foot units, so you know, uh, two beds, a couch, uh, kitchen table. Um, but they, they all work through the management company. So and and if if we think it makes sense, we could designate one of our, we have one extra parking space, we could designate it as loading, but we'd rather just work it through the management company um, to cordon off areas, because a tenant moving on the right side of the building would want a space near the elevator, but a a first-floor resident moving on the left side wouldn't, would not want to be on the right side and have to truck all the way across the whole building. Um, so we have not found an issue in our other properties.
And are you open to a condition um, in, in the approval about the types of bu- businesses and their need for those kind of trucks on any kind of regular basis? I mean, it, it's one thing when you're moving all, all your office furniture in. But um, like you said, businesses without those type of deliveries that need those type of trucks.
We certainly would look at that. Yeah, we, we see it as professional, as a professional organization, not a.
Not a lumberyard.
Yeah. But we wouldn't have, if, if, I would probably say more of an exclusion than an inclusion type of, type of language.
Yep, okay.
Fisher, I have a question. May I?
Yep.
So, Mark, what, what, what is the typical turnaround on, on, on a project like this with this quantity of units wo- overall?
I'm sorry?
What, what is the turnaround typically of a project like this um, in terms of people moving in and out?
Um, well, you're talking about, you're gonna have year leases, if you have a fifty percent retention rate, that means you're, you have sixty move-ins and move-outs every year.
Um, okay, so fi- five a month?
Yeah, yeah.
So the, 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 this is something that, and I just brought it up because the, this is something I, I, I asked way, way back then. I was concerned, I, I kind of agree with the type of commercial spaces that are being um, proposed here, but I was always concerned about uh, moving trucks parking in front and and being, being kind of that, that kind of problem on, on a place where we want to, to, to be a, a, a public space. I mean, i- if possible, I, I, and I asked for, for well, I questioned the idea of a, of a loading area more for moving in and out of the tenants more than, more than the, the commercial spaces. And I mean, it would be ideal if, if, if it's in the back of the site uh, so that that doesn't impact uh, everything that has been accomplished in the front. Um, and I, I don't know if that's possible in terms of the vertical circulation and where, where the elevators are, that probably is, is an issue, but um, it's just something that, that, that did concern me, how, how that's gonna be managed. If we have five moves um, a month, you know, one, one, one change every week, we're, we're gonna see moving, moving trucks all the time in front of this, of the Warner. So that, that, that concerns me.
They wouldn't necessarily be in front of the Warner though, right? They would be in back by the, they should be back by the residential units. Is that right?
Where would that go?
Yeah, where would, where would they, where would the trucks, residential move-ins, where would they?
Based upon where the elevators are, if we were, if we required to designate one, I would designate it off the back straight up. Um, kind of a space next to the L right there. So, because that's a level walkway. And if someone needs to go to the elevator, it's either right there or they're gonna have to come through the lobby and they'll be parking somewhere near the um, handicap or the, or the um, electric vehicle locations. So, I mean, a moving truck is gonna most likely want to back in. Um, but I think the size moving truck we're gonna see is not much bigger than a panel truck. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's not, it'll fit into one space. So we could, we could designate a space in the back, but I just think you have a, anyone who lives on the first floor or maybe the second floor of the, of the left side of the, the building, if you will, would they be like, why am I parking all the way over here? And, you know, so I can be right in a back door. Um.
Yeah, but we cannot, we cannot create this uh, this um, policies based on, on, on what one or two tenants might think. I, I, I think your idea of, of having a designated area that, that if it's gonna be cordon off by the manager when, when, when prompted, if it's in the back, you, you have one extra space, you have some medians there, you could adjust something like that. I, I, I would prefer to see that, that, that seeing trucks all over the place, willy-nilly parking and blocking everything, and that's what we're gonna see from, from, from Pond Street, so.
Yeah, and I, I would all actually be, maybe just my, I'm not able to envision the turning radius that you were probably gonna have pinch points for a truck to come on to the back. It feels like it's pretty tight. So I'm not sure if we've done those counts to make sure you have enough turning radius for.
Remember, a fire truck can get through.
Yeah, I don't know if that's been already checked. If a fire truck can get through, yeah, but it feels like looking at the sketch. It's pretty tight.
Uh, Deepa, I, I think we saw a fire truck to uh, um, travel around the side ones.
Yeah, but we saw it when it was sixteen feet, right, parking?
Oh, that's right.
This is now eighteen feet, so you've, I don't know if you're still able to achieve the same.
Well, actually, the aisle under this plan is twenty-two feet wide with sixteen-foot spaces, so this is technically a fifty-four-foot layout. We're now all sixty layout. So we went to twenty-four-foot aisles, so we now have two more feet in the aisle and four more feet in the parking spaces than this plan.
That's where the space came from? That come from the building?
Uh, yes, a little bit. Uh, the building was shifted a little bit to the right. Um, a little bit to the left, the parking, uh, the building shifted to the right, the parking shifted to the right. Parking opened up a little bit to the left and we actually shrunk a little bit of the, I'll have to ask Matt where we found that foot or two. I think he found it, okay, right through the.
On the inside corners is where we took out each side equally.
I'm just, just curious. That's come from somewhere, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but, but I think they, the, the um, increasing the, the, the aisle size to twenty-four, I think will address what what Deepa brought up, which was a good point. So that would be my only comment on that, that I, that I was concerned about.
So it would be a, it would be a um, a condition that moving trucks do not park in the Warner, that they're not allowed there. Or, or blocking the EV spaces. They have to be in other appropriate areas with, with that.
I would like to see that.
So our, our bylaws require a loading space, but they don't say the size. I, I was trying to throw it, but also pay attention.
They don't. If I could, I think what they say that, you know, adequate loading area would be the language I think is used. So I think it's probably up for the board to look at the operation, to look at the, the application and say, what would be an appropriate loading area based upon each business operation, truck traffic, et cetera. But if you.
I'm likely, depending on the use, because loading is different for different uses. If your apartments are gonna use a small truck, that makes sense as opposed to um, some businesses that deliver on an eighteen-wheeler or something like that, so.
Is, is there always a property manager on site here? Is that how this works?
Uh, in um, during the week, during, uh, normal, probably forty, fifty hours a week, yeah. And, and an on-call for service, that type.
Yeah, I mean, because, I mean, my take is I understand that that's part of the bylaws and it's also our um, our job to make sure it's appropriate. And I'm always weighing that against, you know, a parking space that, a parking area that is used five days a month is is asphalt that um, you know, that we, that has no other purpose. And um, I'm, I'm more for shared, shared uses, so.
Well, so my, my point about that was, I think we can be crafty with some of the things they were saying, either part of a spot or an area, because we um, you know, the applicant was very good pointing out, you know, you sort of set precedence when you start saying, yeah, I don't really think this one needs loading and some other projects and say, hey, you didn't make that happen. So I think we should be very careful about not doing it, and that doesn't mean you can't do it in a different way.
Agreed, totally agree. Yep. Okay. So what's the next item on your?
The next, I would probably, uh, just to, as an update, um, on third-party review, we did, we, we've had a round of comments back. We sent them comments a couple of weeks ago, uh, mostly minor issues. We're waiting for their response. In the meantime, we have filed with conservation for our stormwater permit, so we don't get caught with coming to you without final, final, final plans. Um, we filed a notice of intent for an off-site wetland. We filed the stormwater permit just to make sure that everything we're incorporating for the third party is, is what your uh, commission, your conservation commission is also looking for. So our first meeting is the twenty-second. Um, so that should, when we come back to your board, I'm assuming it sounds like September, we'll at least know maybe we're still working things out with them, but we'll probably be gelling the two, the third-party and the conservation commission to in, into a final plan set for stormwater. Um, the last, not the last item before the architectural items uh, is to have Attorney Cavlak discuss uh, Converse Way. Uh, if you don't mind, I'd let him, I'll turn it over to him.
Please, that's fine.
Thank you. I, I'll be quick here. And uh, Ben, if you would just go back maybe to the current plan that is now shown on the screen, uh, GCG raised the issue about what is now called Converse Way and used to be called Meeting House Path, and whether that area, which we have included in the calculation of buildable lot area, was appropriately calculated in that definition. And we have looked at that. Uh, there is in fact no definition standard for buildable lot area. There are criteria that is set forth in the overlay district about certain minimum area and what can be included and not included. And GCG, I think, was pointing at the provision in the Palm Street, uh, excuse me, Palm Street Overlay District, which says that a street may not be included in the calculation of buildable lot area. And then raised the question about whether Converse Way, formerly known as Meeting House Path, is a street. Um, I have submitted two written documents in regard to this comment. One was a memo that I prepared that was submitted under a cover letter and that memo is dated July twenty-one. And then subsequently, a more detailed letter dated July twenty-ninth, which deals with this issue as well as the loading area issue, which we just covered. The best that I can determine after doing an extensive title search is that uh, this area that we're uh, now proposing to use as both an access drive and a parking area shown on the plan here on the left side of the project was originally delineated as part of the Ledgemere Country Subdivision in the late nineteen seventies. And it was called at that time Meeting House Path, because I think at that time uh, Fafford uh, intended that there would be a circular route from the back of this project where Meeting House Path as a public way is currently, that it would eventually connect to this area now called Converse Way and be able to circulate traffic out onto Pond Street. That, that connection was never made. This section of road was never built out. And in fact, the subsequent plan dated nineteen ninety-nine delineates separately uh, this area that we're now proposing as a entranceway and parking area um, and separated it out from Meeting House Path. It's a private road. The fee ownership of it will be conveyed to Trask as a result of the project. It is subject to an easement. The easement runs to the property owner uh, adjacent uh, which I believe is a um, you know, miniature golf course. And the entrances and exits appropriate for that easement have been maintained. Uh, there's nothing that I can see in the um, bylaw that would um, uh, prohibit the inclusion of this entire area as buildable lot area simply be because it provides access easement rights to the adjoining owner. The same way that all of the other access and parking area and Warner are also included in buildable lot area. So in conclusion, in summary, uh, based on the title research, this is not a street as it is defined in the bylaw that would require it to be excluded. We have counted that area. That area is appropriately counted. And uh, and the plan that is before you meets the requirement of the overlay district and preserves the access easement rights to the neighbor. And if you have any more questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Um, Peter, it seems that this, um, Lisa Mead, I believe, was waiting for some documentation to to be provided by the applicant and then she would look at that. Is that, is that right?
Correct. And, and I spoke to Lisa about this. I know she was on the call earlier and uh, and, and due to my COVID situation, uh, this is something that um, I think I did see an email from Mark and I, and I meant and and I'm trying to follow up on that. And I, this is an item that I'm gonna follow up with next week with Mark and Lisa. Just to kind of clarify, the previous week, when I was working in the office, I did pull the A and R plans um, from um, Ledgemere County, which was approved, I believe, in nineteen seventy-four. And then uh, which was the entirety of the lot area. And then, and then Fafford further subdivided the property into or manipulated the property to create Ledgemere uh, County condominiums, which is the condominiums in the rear. Um, from the site plan, I do see, I agree with the, with Attorney Cole Block. Um, I think Attorney Mead is looking for the deed and title uh, for the property and for her to review that. And so if Attorney Cole Block and, and I'll reach out to you on Monday, um, first thing um, that uh, that Lisa was looking for the deed, um, so she could review that to make sure that the uh, the, the, in the fee of the roadway or into the paper road, I, I don't think it's even, it's not a roadway. The, I'm gonna say the, 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 the approved way is obviously going to be transferred to, to, to Trask Development. And, and Mark, is that, is the deed in your latest memo? Excuse, if, not to put you in the spot.
Uh, the, the, the easement reference to the adjoining property owner is in the memo, Peter. Uh, the deed to Locust, I, I, I can provide that to you if you'd like.
That would be great. I think that's what she's looking for. Uh, if you should, if you could provide the deed to Locust, so I can send all that information over to her and kind of wrap this up as a loose end.
Yes, I think obviously the planning board's gonna rely on town council for the proper information on that, but um, does any member of the board have any direct questions you would like to ask? Otherwise, we will wait for town council um, to, to look at that. Um, but in the meanwhile, we'll go forward discussing in the project, you know, as is.
Great. Um, then I, the last two items, I will turn it over to Matt, because they are involved some architectural issues in the trellis, so.
Thank you, Matt Raw, Icon Architecture. Um, this is supplied by our Landscape Architect Company. Both, uh, unfortunately, they were not available to uh, present today, but I can run through this uh, with you all. Um, so we were asked a little bit about the scale and size of the trellis pieces and parts to make sure that it was appropriately scaled um, for its location, um, what's happening around it. Uh, the original uh, Arbor A as presented, you can see here. Uh, I'll zoom into it a little bit further. Um, there was a question as to how tall it was. We are proposing to have ten-foot clear. Uh, I'll zoom into it a little bit further. Um, there was a question as to how tall it was. We are proposing to have ten foot clear. Um, the different pieces and parts uh, associated with it, six by six posts, uh, four by, uh, six by six uh, main. Uh, beams and then four by four smaller cross members. Um, an alternate to, if we feel that the structure needs to have a little bit more substance, a little bit more heft. Um, Arbor B, um, increasing, it increases the size of the post eight by eight. Um, and then starts to also increase some of the sizes of the other pieces slightly. Um, to further push it a little bit more, maybe we need something that has a base, uh, that matches some of the other. Uh, elements from the landscape that are around it, um, primarily the walls that are around it, the seating walls. So this one looks at adding. The uh, concrete base to the trellis as well. Um, so that's the trellises in a nutshell. Um, because I think we, you guys had asked specifically what the sizes were. This is, again, A is what we had originally presented. Um, and I, we're suggesting that we feel comfortable with B and C as alternates to help elevate and give it a little bit more uh, definition.
Matt, can, can you repeat what the base of option C is made out of?
Uh, it's illustrated as concrete, Marcelo, but I, to be honest with you, I'll have to, I would have to go back and look at the uh, landscape plans to see. The exact material that they're specifying for the, the wall.
Okay, good. That would, that would make a big difference.
Um, I, I can speak to that. We would, the walls will be stone walls, natural stone walls, um, dry, dry stone walls, if you will. Um, and so we'd match that on the basis of the column and they. I don't, I don't think one by one, if you're talking about a six by six, it's probably more eighteen by eighteen, um, with a little bit of a, maybe a granite cap. Um, flared cap. I personally, I likes this, this design, but it scares me a little bit. Because if the bottom of the post ends up being two feet off the ground and a person decides to stand on the. Stone, they now can turn this into a monkey bar as if they're more athletic than me and I, you know, that's my only concern is those pearlins. On the trellis are roughly eleven feet, so, um. I could see some teenagers standing on the posts that are thirty inches off the ground and, and trying to do monkey bars out of it, but. Take that for what it's worth.
But then you underestimate teenagers because they can do it on the other one too.
They probably could.
Um, the only, I'm sorry, the only other change that we made, um, since the last time we came. I think there, the one outstanding question we discussed was, um, overall in the front elevation, uh, there was a consensus that maybe. The roof line felt still a little too long, a little too monolithic. Um, so we did look at what we could do to break it up and I apologize for the. Kind of washed out image here. I'll, I'll zoom in a little bit, but we did take uh, the centerpiece here between the two projections and in. Uh, recess it by two feet to allow uh, our roof line to jog in, um, to provide a little bit of a relief. Uh, at the, at the roof line itself. And those are the ch- changes that we made. Thank you.
Uh, just to get an idea of scale, what is the possible height of that where the signage is for the retail? What is that height?
That's about eleven feet.
Okay, so we're proposing the kind of that wood, um, to be the same height as that?
Yeah, let me go to a better perspective, that kind of. This is the perspective you guys have seen before, you kind of see in relation to the building a little bit better.
It's kind of in the same height, same plane as the.
As the, as the kind of signage band, yep.
Okay, thank you. Um, for me, I think. The two options look better, but I think it, again, it's a scale of the building with. This canopy that may make a lot of difference in choosing which direction to go. It's very hard to kind of see those two different. Uh, items and I think scale of it, that it's B, A, B, or C. I think it has to be the relationship with the building that seeing it individually, at least that's how I'm envisioning it.
But I, I would submit deeper that, in my, in my opinion, I think option C is the best one because not only, it, 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 it changes the. The equation from being an object that is just thrown and standing like a table on the ground. To something that actually belongs to, to the site and, and connects with the building and, and gives it a, 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 a more sense of, 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 of belonging. I, I think has a better proportion and, and it will feel more natural as opposed to just, just an, 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 an artifact. Uh, an apparatus that, that is placed on, on, on the side. Um, that, in, 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 in my opinion, that, that, that's going to. Really improve the, how, how this is viewed so close to the street and in relation to the building.
Yeah, I, I think that option A seems kind of fragile to me, but it is hard. I kind of leave it up to the. The landscape architect to, I assume, who has done others of these, who has. Or, you know, looked at other examples to know what the exact proportions, you know, should be. One seems really fragile. And I really like the base on C. I, I agree with Marcelo. It kind of just otherwise looks like something that could kind of fly away. But whether the top pieces should be four by six, which seems big, it might be, it might be appropriate. It seems more, again, like a. A continuing design project, um, to, you know, for that trellis and, and the experience of the landscape architect. So. But I would say, I would say, I would vote for C as kind of the base model.
If I may, I think one of the things Ian is trying to do is to not make it too overpowering, knowing that it is so close to the street. Uh, there are so many layers that we are dealing with between us and the building, the woo nerf. Um, so trying to make sure that there is a hierarchy still happening, um. Uh, and I have worked with Ian on a number of projects and they basically do a trellis on almost every single one of them.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so I guess we would, you know, um, you know, if it can be put into the rendering and really give us a feel of. Um, of, of what that looks like. I mean, obviously based on his professional opinion too about how it balances out, that would.
If, if it's, if it's okay with the board, I might actually go with the uh, CID, the, the, the C. Idea with the members from A, because I think you get, you get that bottom feel. Um, by doing a stone base, but I'm a little nervous about. Twelve inches, you, you know, u- under C, you're looking that top cross member with the proins on top, it's twelve inches high. And that's a lot of density up there.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a little hard to picture. Like I said, A looks really fragile to me, but maybe in context it wouldn't and maybe with the bases it wouldn't. So, um, but I appreciate the effort to kind of move, move the thing forward to, um. Yeah, and, and if he has actually some examples from previous projects to kind of illustrate different sizes, like this one is like. Example D, this one is like example A, that might, that might help too, um. So. All right, so. Other issues from the board, looking at uh, design review questions too, if we had anything. There that still needed to be addressed.
I sent in, um, a couple things. So one was the, um. That sewer connection, I saw an estimate on, on the uh, instruction, but it didn't include engineering, so I want to. I guess, I assume the intent was that that's needed, so the applicant has to bear all costs, but I do not know.
We, we did discuss that with Haley and Ward and I need to, I need to get better handle from them. Um, procedurally, is this something they are? He, I asked him to prepare, we, we gave, we asked Taylor Ward to prepare a quote to do the job as a, as an open shop job. So, not a town performed job, but presumably someone like myself doing it. Um, I've reached out to my wetland consultant for his estimate for the filing. Because there would be a notice, you know, there'd be the notice of intent filing and some engineering after that. So my, my goal was to prepare a. A sort of a formal number, um, have Haley and Ward look at it. Uh, we do all that, some data on total sewage, plenty of capacity, but they wanted to know. Um, calculations for sewage counts, that sort of thing. So we're working with them. Uh, then we, we would bring that back to the board, um, to try to figure out how we incorporated that presumably in a decision. Whether it's, um, we have an estimate and you'd like us to perform the work. Haley and Ward says, no, we don't want you to perform the work, but we want to, you know, somehow capture the cost associated. Um, I'm trying to work the details out with them before our next meeting on. How this will actually get done, so we know how to incorporate it into whatever, whatever we decide.
I think that's, I think that's something that. Uh, that we need to sit down with GPW, Haley and Ward to figure out the details.
And Peter, on this one, I'm, I may be, uh, behind the times here, but um, have we received? More, um, feedback from the applicant on the GCG letter? Has all of that been read?
Well, the applicant submitted a, uh, uh, excuse me, a response to GCG. I think right now we're waiting G, GCG's response.
Okay.
I don't know if I've received that this week, but uh, that's always something that I have to get back and catch up on. Uh, when I get back to the office.
Okay, because I think it, as soon as we have that next phase, I think then we'll want to go through this. Kind of item by item, once we get GCG's response, um, to, to understand that, how all those, how all those, um, items were. Were taken care of, obviously not the super technical ones that none of us will understand, but the, but the major issues.
Yeah, no, I think we're waiting, we're waiting a, a response and, and I'm going to follow up with GCG, uh, when I get back to the office.
Okay. Um, then I think if it's, unless there are other.
Couple other that I, I did send in, but it's sa- similar just about the water and sewer size and that's kind of the same thing, figuring out the. The volume and, and do we have enough volume? Is that can increase the price for everyone because we kicked us into another tier. Of sewer rates and uh, the water, our, our water permit with DEP. Was this future calculated for, um, these apartments and we don't care or is that, that kind of an issue? Um, and then this, this is probably, um, not so much the applicant, but the town, I think for safety, obviously. That currently I do not believe the bus goes up that way. And so we probably have to, um. It means either a condition or, or considerate with the planning board about how that bus stop is going to be handled. Since we're pretty sure there's children there.
I have actually reached out to Jim Adams about this, about, um, not only, not just this project, but. In general about, um, uh, capacity in schools and about busing and about how that, how that works. Because generally buses can't, um, can't go on to a, a, a private site. They can't go into one hundred Chestnut Street, for instance, and they wouldn't be able to go on to, to the site either. So just how they, you know, how they do that. So he, I just got that response late today, so, um. I'll, I'll look at that and make sure some information goes out to the board, um, from the, from the school district. So, um, but if there's, if there's any other questions from the board, we'll take those. Otherwise, I thought maybe we would start to go through. I see Kathy Rooney's hand up. But uh, maybe start to go through the, um, the, the re- any remaining issues from the notes. From the design review committee that I have in front of me. Maybe we can go through those. I think a lot of them have been addressed and maybe if we bring. The, um, presentation back up, we can see how they have been addressed, just to kind of go through that, go through that list, um, as much as we can. So, um. Kathy, I'm going to go through this list, but if you want to jump in, um, where appropriate on the issues. Um, then, then that is good too, if, if you want to unmute. So the list I have before me is the design review comments on five oh one Pond Street, um, in reference to committee meetings on. June second and June sixteenth. Uh, the, the design review could, committee hadn't asked for. Um, photo montage renderings, um, of the building in relationship to Valley Farm. And I know I saw those online. Um. And, um, trying to read quickly through here. But I think those photo montages were there to try to give a sense of scale. I think there were, there were also some drawings, um, given face on, I think showing relative heights. I'm not sure that was. Um, they do talk about the elevation, yep. So there was one, I think, showing the height of this building relative, in an elevation relative to, there you go. Relative Valley Farm next door and also to the landscape, which I think is revealing as well. Um, they.
Oh, yep. We, um, we did have. Sort of a late request from one of the members for a clarification. Or more of a detail to see. If somebody was standing in the parking lot. At Valley Farm, looking towards this project, what would they see?
Is that something you have more, that's just right off, I guess, that's right up the street a little bit, right?
Yeah, and the street is actually. Um. It's, I'm going to say somewhat elevated. I don't actually know what the elevation is above. Valley Farm, so it's really hard to tell from this perspective and I think that's. Why I got the apologies with the late request and the one, and the ask, because I think. Other than our comments, that was the only other question we had and we, we just are really pleased that the. Applicant has addressed so many of our comments so thoroughly.
Great. Yeah, so maybe we can look at that, um, get that view for the next meeting, just the view of the building from standing in the Valley Farm parking lot.
Yeah, they wanted to see the actual, um, you know, where, where parked cars would go and what the headlights would do if you were standing there. Um, you know, because at that point you'd be. At the same level as the, um, their common rooms next door.
I think it probably should be able to be shown in a section rather than trying to. Put in car headlights and.
I'll update this section to better accurately reflect the elevations of the parking in relation to our building.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
So Kathy, are you saying that your list has really been, you've gone through the list and it has been checked off, that you feel satisfied with the list? Or they're outstanding?
Well, I'd like to go through the list.
Okay, well, I'm going to go through them so brief, uh, but in a kind of quick manner, because I think a lot of them have been taken care of. So we talked about the, the hip roof, um, and, um. And I, I, there was a mention that we had looked at a mansard roof. At one point, I cannot remember what that mansard look, roof looked like and how.
If you, at the moment, I can try and.
Can you remind me? Because my memory is failing. Meanwhile, um, some of the comments say, um, applicant presented an increase in the amount of glazing at the retail level, appears appropriate. Um, commented on the blue siding that extends to the ground floor from the levels of glove. Applicants agreed that the entire commercial ground floor should be gray brick rather than the blue. I think that is there, right?
Yeah, you did the brick all the way across.
Um, canopy structure has been improved. By flat roofs, um. An opportunity to take the, an opportunity to connect the building with the site by using the wooden language of the pergola. And incorporating it more into the canopies. Is that something new?
Uh, I think they're referring to, I'm sorry, I'm going to zoom in on this, the, these pieces here, we have some small eyebrow canopies. I'll call them above some of these entrances. Um, we didn't feel adding wood look to this elevation. We didn't feel adding wood look to this elevation with the number of materials and color chains we already had was going to help any.
Okay. We'll look at that. We had looked at the tower last time. I remember we looked at some options and I think the planning board agreed on the option, the lower option, yep, that we liked. Planning board, please jump in here if I'm getting anything incorrect, just going down the list here. Taking another look at the wood pergola, which they are doing. And there's various questions about. Net zero being solar ready. Which I think. Let's see. I think you have gone all electrical, isn't that right?
Yes.
Yeah, so maybe I'm some, a lot of this list I do think has been taken care of. Question about appearance and density of the plantings.
That was, that was, I believe this, this is what we're going to see at year one, is that correct?
The tree heights, yep, same thing we were discussing at 100 Chestnut.
Okay.
So they're going to be 30 foot.
No, they're not going to be 30 feet. There Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, 15 ish.
Yeah, the trellis is 10, they're about four to five feet above the trellis.
Okay, because I'm looking at windows counting up as each set of windows is is a is a height, is that correct? Is a 10 foot height?
Perspective. The trees are closer to you.
Okay.
The trees are closer to you, so they're going to appear larger than the building.
Here, here's a front on elevation.
Right, and that shows them more in keeping with what I thought I was going to see.
That's the same, it's from the same model, it's just the perspective is making them look taller. It's all from the same model. All these are rendered from one model.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, and then there's just various questions about lighting. You know, lighting bleed landscape, making sure the landscape plan and the lighting don't, you know, complement each other versus conflict. I assume you have received this list and have gone, it looks like you received the list and gone over some of these things.
Yeah, I believe at the last meeting Ian presented a updated lighting plan and.
Okay.
We had, we had to match up some islands with. Post locations and such, so. We also have, we have the lighting plan for the building next door. So we're kind of working our lighting in around their lighting as well, because they they have some bleed over to our side, so we're just making sure we're not. Abutting the two lights, so.
Okay. Yeah, I think another thing in terms of, there's a note here about, you know, being EV ready, and I think the state. Peter may have some information on this, but I think the state is looking at a requirement for large buildings about having. 25% expandability or something like that for EV parking.
Yeah, so I just.
Yeah, but looking forward.
I think there was an article I saw and with the new stretch codes coming out, they're going to look to update that to make obviously large. Developments that 25% of the parking be EV indoor EV ready, just as that process kind of takes off and so. You know, I think that is going, obviously, I think that's coming in the pipeline for obviously for for numbers different reasons. But I don't think it's here yet, but I think that is part of the conversations that are going to be kicked around at the state level. Within updating. Building such goods, so I think there was an article I read, you know, it was in a planning conference. Not call, but kind of training session, so, but I'll look for more information about that. Just to circle back with a note, and it was like a parking stall size. I did want to make a note that I did do some research on this, and it looks like the town need them in Marlboro. They do have a compact car definition in a size, and I believe that was eight by 15. And so I think what is being proposed is very similar to what other other communities and similar communities are approving. And what they have updated their bylaws to, so just to make a note of that when I had the mic.
Thanks, Peter.
And Tricia, on that note, I think I mentioned to Peter once, maybe something for the planning board to to think about. We really need to update our parking guides on on the bylaws, they're totally outdated and and there's nothing. More on green than than over expanding asphalt unnecessarily, so I I think we. That there need to to be updated.
I agree, we will add that to. Add that to the planning topics, which we're not going to get to tonight, but but make sure you don't lose track of it.
So Tricia, just to jump in here for a second, to go back to the EV ready. Request that we asked for again, because we've had a bunch of conversations with. These guys about this. But we know of another development in town where they're making the entire thing EV ready, and I was like, oh, how are you doing that? Which is why I have, we put in that we are recommending using an idea. That another developer is using, which is add six inch sleeves into the beds boarding, the parking lot stubbing up into sprinkler box type structures that are flush with the ground, but ready for future use.
What development is that?
The one we just saw earlier, 100 Chestnut, so. Well, when you ask him about it, he says he's going to have it all over the place.
We, they described it's going down two aisles, not not everywhere.
He said, he told us in a meeting it was going to be everywhere.
Well, we will, we will.
So, so. So now I'm, now I'm a little confused because he said he totally agrees with that concept, he was going to have it. Ready everywhere.
We can check, you know, we can look at it.
Well, he said it more than once, so, because we asked more than once, so I'm just going to, I'm throwing it out there, because I, if. He, he basically was suggesting to us that it was fairly easy to do and. Wasn't any more expense, because he was putting them in the planting beds that are already adjacent to the parking lots, and I was kind of like. If it's that easy, why isn't everybody doing it?
Well, Matt, if you want to, having an inside information on this, if you want to check into that. I mean, I'm, I think that'd be great, but I'm also interested in where the state is on things as well. So between the two, between the the various. You know, proposals, I think we can find something that will help us get into the future. But but be appropriate for, you know, 2025, you know, as well. So, so Matt, can you ask and figure out where that comment came from or?
I believe they submitted at one point a plan showing where they're proposing to extend their EV spaces to for future use.
Okay, great. We'll get on the same page and then we'll go from there. So meanwhile, did you find the the other roof?
I did.
Do you have that? Oh, there we go.
Way back. So this was the mansard quote unquote roof that we had originally proposed. I think we've come a long way from this.
I do remember that. Personally, I'm glad we went away from this. Think we got a much better solution where we are.
Yeah, I, it looks, it looks kind of heavy, you know, to me. I think the, I think the roof where we're at. You know, I don't know, almost. Almost could use some simplification. I'm not sure what it is about. I'm not, I'm not sold on it yet, the. But it's, it's, it's soft, it's trying to go away, I think, but I'm not sure what the. What the solution is for it, if it needs. Like, I like that, I like how the date, the gables, sorry, the shed dormers express themselves on the other roofs. This roof doesn't, just doesn't quite.
I have, I have an idea, suggestion, if I may, Tricia.
Yeah, sure.
Maybe we look at pulling back at the balcony locations to allow these pieces to. Feel more like a true dormer, because they will express that in the massing.
Yeah, I mean, I think anything you want to look at and as a, as a designer, I'm certainly not pretending I have the answer. There's just something. I agree with Marcelo that I don't think the mansard is working. I like this, the softer look. But there's something on that front facade that isn't quite. Quite there. Deepa, do you have the answer? You're sitting back looking.
No, it's also that we're looking at two different views that was kind of more in elevation and this is a perspective, so I don't know if. That also have. The yellow fit makes a difference.
Yeah.
Like this changed the whole look and feel.
Right, yeah.
But yes, I agree. I don't think we want to go back to that, that one year old rendering. Come a long way from there.
All right. Okay. Obviously, on this project. We have some things outstanding, they are under, they are going to be starting the the con con process for the stormwater permit. We're looking for the, we need to still go through the feedback from GCG. There's some water and sewer information that we need to look at and get information about. Probably will, probably will be taking as a, as a board, taking another look at the parking. Including, including loading areas and the sizes and and to make sure that. We're all happy with with the way that is working. We'll be looking for. Lisa's feedback on Converse Way to to see how that, just to make sure that pans out. And I guess the parking, including the the EV ready as well, we'll we'll put that into parking. Did I miss anything on that list that we are? Outstanding issues?
Just for consideration on the parking thing, I don't think I've ever envisioned that we need nine by 20 parking spaces, I just. That's what the bylaw is, so I'd like to see that the space existed for that, and we're going opposite way, you know, we're we're. Stealing a foot of the building to make more parking spaces, we're not ever gaining any more. Open space from it, so if we, if we go to nine by 18 foot spaces instead of nine by 20. Where does the town aim at nine foot, two foot, 180 spaces in open space? And and I don't think it exists on the site. You know, I'm in favor of having the spaces be appropriate for the size of cars, but just that should be. In turn, giving us more. In space, more, you know, in space to absorb water into the ground to plant trees and that kind of thing.
I would argue that we designed, this, this project went in a direction based upon its location. And it went based upon its affordability percentage, so I mean, I need to know. I need to know the nine by 18 is acceptable. To me, it's not a negotiation, it's not a, it's not a, well, we're giving you, instead of a 20, you can go to 18. We want something for that. Well, that's not how we started the project. And I think nine by 18 appears to be an acceptable size, so and you know, I haven't been at this a year, but I've been at it nine months and. And I'm, I cycled this down to five issues to try to make. As productive as possible, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping tonight we can at least say nine by 18 is generally reasonable. Overall, I'm not looking to have it increase unit count or anything. We do sort of agree that loading areas or we disagree that loading areas would be required. Out of the woo nerf, legal issue is is out there to be sort of confirmed later. But I'm just, I'm just hoping to make sure that I'm not running down a road. With other third parties, conservation commissions, paving counts, all to just try to. Go back to the drawing board again, so I'm hoping we can kind of go somewhere with that tonight.
I, that's fair. I mean, I think, and I'm welcome the opinions of the board, I think for for my part, having been through the. You know, the school last summer, that that the nine by 18 is a very, with the 24 foot. 24 foot feet in between is fairly typical, you know, around town, it isn't extraordinary, it's a pretty typical. Parking spot, and that is what is what Marcelo had just commented on, that perhaps our parking regulations need, especially in the light of sustainability and smaller spaces. And less asphalt that maybe they need to be reexamined. So, and for me, I think that. You know, a few months ago, when we were, when that woo nerf first came. That's where what we were pushing for, that's where our open space was, that's what the public, the public thing that we were asking for. And so I feel like the project at that time did get compressed, I remember, in order to allow. That woo nerf to appear and to kind of give up that that space. So for me, the nine by 18. Spots are acceptable, we've done it before, it's, it's a fairly typical parking spot. To my knowledge. And and we've gotten rid of the compact spots, the, so that, you know, ta- take, took away that concern that we all have all normal sized spaces. And and without taking away or taking away. Probably in a very minor way, the space of the woo nerf that we work so hard to create. So that that's where I'm sitting on it. That's where I'm sitting.
I, I agree, and I'm in the same place as you are, I think, I think we're at a good place, and and I think we agreed today, Mark can confirm. That we were going to make sure that the loading. Area, exchangeable loading area is on the back and that that gets regulated so that we don't see trucks all over the place.
And I agree with both Tricia and Marcelo, and I think, yes, the loading, the loading circulation of how the residents use. The parking spots, I think. Having that at the back makes a lot more sense than losing the woo nerf effect that we spent so much time trying to create and. Have that retail front. Get hidden by loading and loading trucks, so. I think the nine by 18, I think I, I agree with Tricia and Marcelo, I think we're at a good place.
Kate, do you want to weigh in? Are you?
Uh, no, I'm not, I'm not voting on this, I'm not allowed to, so.
Oh. What were you saying, Peter?
I was going to say Kevin is the voting member replacing Ian on this one.
Oh, okay.
So Kevin's a, as an associate member, Kevin fills in for Ian, so. If Kevin has any thoughts on the parking.
Kevin might have further thoughts, but he started the, kind of started the conversation.
I think, I think I'll just go back and look at what changed when the woo nerf came in, but it's my recollection that the building just shifted, it wasn't. It didn't shrink in scale.
I think. Do you have, do you guys have a comment? I was thinking it did shrink.
It did, it did slightly, yes. We we pulled in the wings and tightened up the back. And the way I accommodated the not losing the square footage was kind of bolstering the wings overall in the shift. So there was shifts to do, but it wasn't, I think what we presented to you at one point was the, all the different options. And we, if if we were to go to a lower density, it meant the reduction in the of number of affordable units. So on and so forth, that was the conversation that we had at the time. So the building did shift, condense, and then shift back to create the.
Okay. So. I know, for your, for your. So that you can move forward, I guess I will take of. Just it doesn't have to be a formal vote, but a show of hands on the. The the nine, the nine by 18 spaces is okay to proceed with, can I see? Okay. Kevin's not entirely happy. He'd like to see more green space as we all would, but I'll trade it for the woo nerf right now.
Thanks.
So that that process can proceed and okay, um, I think we're at the end of our time. We'll be waiting for the items. You know, various items in process now that we'll be looking to discuss next time. Which I assume then will be on, again, on September eighth. Correct, Peter?
Yeah, and, and
That's fine.
Is that okay? Okay.
Yeah, we'll send you a link to that.
Perfect, thank you. And I know I've spoke, I think I've spoken with you about the applications that were coming in. And so we have to obviously taken with the we have to work to.
Make a motion, we continue till September eight.
And a second.
I will second that.
Okay, Marcelo's second. Roll call vote.
Keep going, good day.
Marcelo, one, a eye.
Jersey card.
Kevin McKenna.
And Tricia Kendall, I. So that is continued to September eighth. And all right, why don't we get Lisa, Lisa Anna back on?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And if anyone has any alterations in the meeting minutes, we'll just get that taken care of.
I didn't catch any, Trisha.
Okay, yeah, I thought they were in pretty good shape myself.
Okay, I'm back.
All right, we're just looking at, uh, meeting minutes.
Are those the June twenty third?
Yes, June twenty third.
I don't have any changes.
Okay. All right, no changes from anyone? Does everyone have a chance to look at them? Okay. Then I will make a motion to accept the June twenty third meeting minutes, um, as submitted.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote.
Keep going, good day.
Marcelo, one, a eye.
Anna Tuskmanitsky, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I. So, oh, I don't know if Kevin was in on those. He might.
Yeah, I was there, Kevin McKenna.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Um, you, you also might note, maybe you noted that I, I did some significant changes to the, uh, agenda. I tried to make it get rid of all the extraneous information, keep the things I thought was important. And kind of renumber things that they're more consistent. So two is always public hearings. Three is always planning topics separate from reports, separate from administrative matters and separate from adjournment. I'm hoping that allows us to keep track of some of those items that we're keeping track of like economic impact tool, but separated from a report like a report from the sustain or a report by a member about the sustainability committee or something like that. So any comments about that? You can just email me, see if it's working or if you have any suggestions. Otherwise, we're going to save everything else, um, until what few minutes we might have, um, at our next meeting. On August, what, twenty fifth? So and I think of prior to that time, here has also been getting some information. I don't remember, Peter, if it's been distributed about talking about upcoming meetings, about ten to fifteen main, about the simultaneous about simultaneous, um, application and demo delay. So, so, um, Lisa just got back some information about that. So maybe that's, if, if it hasn't been sent out already, maybe that's something you can format, Peter, and, and get out to the board prior, obviously, to that next meeting so that, um, so that we have all that information clear.
Yeah, no, I'll do that early next week when I get back to the office. I'll take care of that. Obviously, uh, that question was asked and I brought it up to Lisa. And, uh, and she has provided it with, with help.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone? Thanks. I appreciate all the kind responses. With my situation, I don't really know much of anything yet, including when I'm here and when I'm in Boston, but, uh, if I seem a little short and grumpy, because I'm a little stressed, just let me know. I'll try to be better. So meanwhile, I appreciate everyone's efforts in everything that's going on and, uh, trying to, um, make progress and on important issues and, um, while, uh, while understanding everything and not, um, not trying to take shortcuts. So difficult to balance. Anyway. Thank you. All right, that said, we'll make a motion. I will make a motion to adjourn much too late at eleven, ten, your time. Roll call vote.
Keep going, good day.
Anna Tuskmanitsky, I.
Marcelo, one, a eye.
Jersey card.
McKenna.
And Tricia Kendall, I. Good night, all.
Take care.
Thank you, everybody.
Peter feel better.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too.